That was good, that was good idea.
Alright, we're good? We're live? Alright, could we please stand for the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Alright. Our first order of business is an approval of a proclamation number twenty twenty-five seventeen honoring Karen Pinch. I'm going to read it aloud and we'll then have a motion to approve it. So, alright. Whereas Karen D. Pinch was hired as a town administrator on April eighth, two thousand fifteen. And whereas Karen helped source grants for police department renovations, the four Richmond townhouse, a road community slash recreation project, upgrades to the Beaver River Dog Park, cyber elections and upgrades to the Richmond Dog Park, and was instrumental in the hiring of the current IT company, Uplink IT, vastly improving our cybersecurity, network efficiently, and employee satisfaction. And whereas Karen helped to assemble an EMA task force to help with regional COVID clinics, oversaw several projects with ARPA funding, including providing equipment, funding for local ambulance and fire companies, the creation of the Human Services slash Community Advocate Department, obtaining a healthcare advocate for the Richmond Police Department, improvements to the radio tower, renovations to Richmond PD and Town Hall, and relief to small local businesses during COVID through the utilize utilization of small business loans. And whereas Karen is a dedicated wife to Steve and mother to Ryan and Emily. And whereas Karen was a dedicated and loving daughter to her parents, Ken and Lee DeLuca, whom she remembers fondly, great admiration. And whereas Karen's passion for her professionalism, I'm sorry, her profession, family, colleagues, and her kindness is felt by all who met her. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the members of the Town Council of Richmond hereby thank Karen D. Pinch for her ten years of service to the town of Richmond and call upon all Richmond residents to congratulate her on her retirement and pay special tribute to her for her commitment to the community. And it be further resolved that this proclamation shall become a permanent part of the official record of the Town Council of the Town of Richmond.
Alright.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we are motion our second, we will poll vote, Councilor Dunsmore.
Yes.
Mennick.
Yes.
Homashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Uh. Not clapping because we have a gift for Karen. Um, for those of you can't see and those online, this is a traditional clock given to people who have retired and there's an inscription on the back I'm gonna read. Um, Karen, your retirement closes another successful chapter in your long career of dedicated public service. Your unwavering commitment to our residents have an impact for years to come. Your efforts have placed Richmond in a better place than it was ten years ago. The council, staff, and residents wish you the best for retirement filled with happiness, health, and new adventures. Um, and then there's today's, not today's date, August first, twenty twenty-five, because that's what we have until. Right. I'll get it. I thought it still looked alright.
And he was. You gotta, you gotta come down if people can see, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn.
Hit it under my desk. A little bit? Over here. You should rehearse this.
And Karen. Rodney Newman, who loved you and served with you, who I'm sure is looming above us here somewhere. Uh, God rest his soul. Uh, I think it says on the back of the clock, uh, your time here has run out, so. Back for Ronnie, so there you go.
Something running.
Yeah, so he would be, he so appreciated everything you did for him.
Alright. Alright, on to our next item of business is an approval of a resolution twenty-five for the assessment and collection of the taxes fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash seventeen for the assessment and collection of taxes fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
Second. Alright, so we have our motion, any council discussion? Alright, we'll roll call vote, Councilor Dunsmore.
Yes.
Mennick.
Yes.
Homashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Alright, licenses, we have a. Oh, sorry, uh, we have a one-year door-to-door sales license for Zachary Olson of Trinity Solar. Anybody want to throw a motion on the floor for this item? No?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the one-year door-to-door sales license for Zachary Olson, Trinity Solar.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any council discussions or questions for the applicant? Um, alright, uh, sure, go ahead, Mark.
Is he here?
Is he present? Kennedy, do you see if he's online?
Usually.
I don't, I think it's a requirement they come, but if you have.
No, I know, I just, I just, I know it was an issue with someone from Trinity um, soliciting without a license and they just don't know if it was, you know, if this was him or not.
Maybe a question for Chief or Aaron, you're shaking your head, do you have an answer?
Yeah, anyway.
It's not?
No, okay.
Sure, go ahead, counsel.
Uh, yeah, no, I, I think, um, I, I would rhetorically ask anyone in the audience to raise their hand if they enjoy having someone randomly show up at their house at six P M. to ask them to buy solar. I don't see any hands. Um, my point being is, um, you know, I went to Trinity's website, they have fantastic website. It says, contact us if you're interested. Um, I've talked to a lot of constituents who have expressed just annoyance at the door-to-door sales, especially in this day and age, somebody randomly coming to your house, coming on your property. So I think there are other ways for Trinity to do business. It's not stopping them from doing business. It's just asking them to use the same traditional method, reaching out to customers that others do. The, the other issue, which is a, it's germane to this because it is a door-to-door license, was not Trinity, but it was another company that we recently had an issue with in the town where they were doing door-to-door sales. I particularly ran into the person and I asked them if they had their license. They said, oh, I didn't know we needed one. I suggested they go and contact Town Hall, um, which she said, oh, I'll call my office right now. I talked to Administrator Pinch and I said, this is great. Come to find out, my own Ring camera, ten minutes later, went off showing this person coming to my house trying to sell pest control. So that's the kind of behavior, obviously, we have, it's not a connection of that behavior to Trinity, but that's the kind of stuff that is just annoyance to the residents, why I've heard from so many people that they don't want door-to-door sales. Now, it's not changing the ordinance, or ordinance, but in this case, I don't feel compelled to approve this. Over.
Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
I think I've made my opinion very clear on this numerous times when this has come up, that I don't support the door-to-door sales licenses. Um, as Jim said, I don't think it's worth changing the ordinance because this actually allows us to enforce these licensing requirements. If we actually, um, if we rescinded the ordinance, it would actually essentially make door-to-door sales legal all over the place. And I think that we've heard enough from residents in this community that they are tired of it. And I also agree with Jim, the fact is, if you don't know about solar at this point, I don't know what to tell you. And I don't think anyone is, is, who's interested in solar is waiting for someone to show up at their door. So I have not changed my position on these licenses.
Uh, I'll just say this, we have this license available for people. If folks on the council are opposed to door-to-door sales, they should move to repeal the license. It's not fair to someone who's applying for a license that's available to deny it because you don't like door-to-door sales licenses. I think it's unfair to that individual. A lot of people do this for the summer, make a few bucks. Um, and I, again, Mr. Olson should not suffer for the sins of others.
Do you want to go ahead?
And I'm just gonna say, I voted for it last time. I, I wouldn't change my vote either. I just think, um, you know, it's a business that comes to our town to try to get, you know, so I don't, uh, I would vote for it again.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I'm on the fence. I would, you know, I, I also don't want people coming door to my door, door at six P M. I don't think that denying this license will stop other companies from doing bad things. Um, we have it in books. I've voted for other licenses, so for consistency's sake, until we change the ordinance and make it so it's not allowed, um, I'm gonna approve it as well. But I do agree that I don't agree with, uh, door-to-door sales, but still going forward with approving it. So with any other counselor discussion before we vote?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Only other issues I have is how many different Trinity Solar door salesmen do we need in this town? I mean, maybe that's something else we have to consider in the future. But I think this is the third one from Trinity Solar. I mean, I'd feel like at this point that these salesmen have been across the entire community. How many times is the same company with a different representative going to come to your house and try to solicit you to put solar on your roof? It's another one of my issues, that they keep asking for licenses at the same company, different representative.
Alright, so we'll go for our roll call vote, Councilor Dunsmore.
Yes.
Mennick.
No.
Homashano.
No.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Um, on to new hire, discussion and consideration of hiring Thomas J. DeTora, uh, for a full-time police dispatcher. Alright, Chief, if you want to give us a little background.
Absolutely.
We'll go from there.
Well, I think Thomas is actually online right now. Yes, uh, this is, this is something that I've shared with you before. It is more challenging than ever to try to recruit and retain police officers, but also people in public safety dispatchers who have to work third shift between eleven P M. and seven A M. By showing me, hold hands, how many people have worked third shift? How many people working third shift right now?
Oh, wow.
You can wreak havoc on a family life.
The nun.
Your, your biorhythms with sleep, your health overall, and to find people that are willing to do that, what we can pay them, it's very difficult. On top of that, this isn't just a job where you're giving somebody an item and they're giving you money in exchange. This is people calling with a crisis. Crises can range. Sometimes people will call the police department and they are not in the right frame of mind and they just are looking for someone to assure and calm them and guide them. You take a heightened person who's really alarmed, to get them to a place where they can calm down enough to give you information that you can get onto your patrols is critical. Tom excels at that. Uh, he has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. He's been working for us part-time for a year and he has been a huge asset to our department. I am actually honored. I almost begged him to be willing to serve in this capacity, uh, but he's just, he's an honorable public servant. He really, he's, he is wired this way. God made him in a way to help people. And he's, he's very spiritual. Uh, he's currently a a counselor with the Salvation Army, and I know he draws a lot from his faith, but he's earned the respect and the admiration of people that he works with at our department. Every police officer has told me individually how great he does at dispatch. We have two vacancies right now, one with the fourth full-time dispatch hire that was just approved. Our other full-time employee left for work for better pay and benefits. So I am asking that the council approve this hire of Thomas DeTora as a full-time dispatcher for the police department and that we deviate from no paid leave for the first year in lieu of the fact that he has been working for us as part-time capacity for a year, offer him five days vacation for the next year.
Okay, let's speak. Do we have a motion from council? Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, motion to approve the request to hire Thomas J. DeTora as a full-time police dispatcher, effective date July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at the salary rate approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget and including a retroactive five days of vacation for his service part-time, already served to the department.
Second, I'll second it. Any council discussion?
Yeah, real quick, Chief, did you say we're gonna be down a dispatcher, so we'll only have three on the roll?
Currently have two full-time dispatchers. We always had three. We lost a third. Uh, we're training some people at part-time right now. But with this last budget, we talked about a fourth full-time dispatcher to avoid having police officers being wooded in to sit on the desk at a higher rate of pay.
Right, that was one of the changes to me in the budget, so we had four full-time police officers.
So this will be a full-time dispatcher if you approve this.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll go for our vote, Councilor Dunsmore.
Yes.
Mennick.
Yes.
Homashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Alright, thank you so much.
Alright, bye. Thomas, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Alright, um, discussion, consideration of Pete Burton's resignation from the Economic Development Commission.
Motion to accept the resignation from Peter Burton from the Economic Development Commission with regret.
Second.
Alright, we have our motion, our second, any discussion? Alright, we'll go for our vote, Councilor Dunsmore.
Yes.
Mennick.
Yes.
Homashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Alright, so now we're on to discussion and consideration of appointments to the Town Administrator Search slash Hiring Committee as required by the charter with an appointment of a town council member to serve. Um, with this, we have ten applicants. I just want to thank everyone in advance for applying. Um, I think we discussed this a little bit last time. That's a lot for one board, so I was thinking maybe we should open it up with discussing how big we think this commission should be. Um, then interview or, you know, have people stand up and just explain why they want to be on the committee and kind of go with the same procedure we always do for appointing people. Does that sound like a good plan? Alright, so what are we thinking for the size of this committee? Sure, go ahead, Jim.
Um, I was reflecting on some of the other committees that we've had for this type of similar activity and was thinking seven. Seven is a number that is not even, it's a recommendation to council, but still you would have a majority with seven on a, on a board.
Sure, go ahead, Jeff.
I was thinking small, three or five, um, only because seven, um, it's a lot to get, like that many people all in one place, you know, with schedules and things like that, so, um. Yeah, like I said, three or five, I think, uh, maybe, maybe more five than three, uh, is a good number.
Alright. Sure, go ahead, Mark.
I, so I'm gonna take the middle. Um, and, and just, and just based upon my own review, I, I think six is, is a good number based upon the way I looked at this. Um, so you'd have, I think ideally you'd have the one council member, you'd have one staff person, and then four members of the community. So that would be, that would be six. And I, you know, I, I understand the rationale for an even number, but if we're recommending a candidate by a one-vote margin, I don't know that that's a very good recommendation, so I, you know, that, I, I'm not as concerned about having an odd number, so you don't have a tie, because if you have a tie or even a one-vote margin, I know, at least I would look at it as, well, gee, this recommendation isn't really a recommendation.
Yeah.
Half a recommendation, and so I'm, I'm not as concerned about having an even number at six than.
Yeah. Um. You want to go ahead or you don't?
I'll let him speak first.
Jim, where do you want to go? Before we go back to Jim, I'm gonna have a turn. Um, I agree, my thoughts were that it would be, um, actually like five, because I thought seven was a little too high, too, too much. Um, not only getting all those people in the same time, same place, that it can be difficult, but also just too many thoughts in the room, too many, too many things happening. And I'm not shying away from having an uneven number, um, because we're supposed to get more than one recommendation, we're supposed to get two recommendations. So if this group is deadlocked and they're like, hey, we like these two people, I agree with Mark's point that, you know, that's probably not the best, we should know what the vote is as well, so we'll know if that happens, but also they can say, you know, we're working as a team, let's send both of these applicants to them, and they can send more. They can send three, four, five, it says a minimum of two, so they can send as many recommendations to us as they'd like. Um, so I'd like to stay to the five to six number. Um.
But Dan go first, if you.
Sure, I, I will, yeah, no, I, I've been waffling on this for a while since our first discussion about how many people is appropriate on a committee such as this. Um, just my experience at work and be on the planning board with seven, I mean, seven has worked fairly well on the planning board. We get a lot of, um, different people with different backgrounds and demographics and it's, it's good to have all of that information and, and everyone's experience kind of brought into, um, one committee or commission. Um, I do like what Mark was discussing, because that was something I did want to bring up. And we have quite a few staff members that, um, put in for this as well as residents. I think a good cross-section of having a council member, having a staff person that knows the inner workings of the town hall, and then a good, again, a good cross-section of the residents would be really helpful in trying to determine, I guess, the, the future direction of our town. And I would recommend a town administrator also. Uh, so I, five, six, or seven, I'm not opposed to, to any of those, because I think you can get some really good discussions going, even with seven people. But again, it's hard to get some people in the room at one time, so completely understand that. But I'm open, five to seven, anywhere in there.
Here, go ahead, Jim.
This is a question, just a logistics, um, that I think Aaron could answer from a quorum perspective. This, would this five be subject to quorum?
Yes.
Performance, so when you break it down, if there are five, is quorum two or three?
Does he three?
Three, so three is quorum, so you have three individuals that are gonna set vision and strategy. Uh, five, six, seven, that might, my view for more board, four, right, so it's my view for a larger pool, seven, or even, you know, to have that diversity of thought and also to avoid the challenge of a smaller quorum number. That's all.
Okay. Um, yeah, I wanted to touch real quick on the thoughts about the makeup as far as employees and residents. Um, because I had the number five in my head, I was thinking, you know, we have our one council member, um, two employees and two residents. That's where my thinking was. I did want not, I wouldn't want just one employee in there. I'd want more than one. That's just me. Anybody else have anything they want to throw on this?
Um, I, I've been persuaded by what Jim just said, coupled with what I said about having seven. You have a quorum of four people, even if you can't get all seven, there's gonna be multiple meetings. People will have the opportunity to review the material that's put in front of them, and if they can't make one meeting, they will come to another meeting and provide their, their notes and their thoughts on it. Um, that way you can get your one council member, you can get two staff members, and then you've got four residents as well, or you can do three staff members. Um, I think it's important to have the staff on there, because again, the staff does know what the day-to-day duties of a town administrator are, um, but it's also important to have our residents have input. Um, I also think it might be a good learning opportunity for some residents to understand what a town administrator does and go through those discussions about what kind of role and responsibilities that, that they have. And then decide based on, on the information they're provided, if that applicant is gonna fill the role in the manner that we expect.
Alright, so I, I was gonna go back to you, Jeff, because honestly, you were the lowest side of the spectrum. How do you feel about going up to seven or, and share whatever else you'd like to share as well?
Um, yes, I had same concerns about staff. So, um, probably go up to six, with three residents, two staff, and one town council. I think seven's too many, I just think that's too many people to get. Like I, I would like the number for like everybody to show up and be present and not like, you know, somebody couldn't make it or things like that, because you just miss, you know, um, good communication and things like that, so.
Agree.
Yeah, six, be two and one, yeah.
For sure, I, I agree with like, there's an expectation that you to come, do as many meetings as possible. Um, sure, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, I, I also, uh, I understand the point made by Council Reynolds as far as, you know, the difference between six and seven. So I think if the council agreed to six, then that, you know, it, we wouldn't run into a problem, um, because we should have some some clear indications based on the work they would do, so I wouldn't be opposed to six.
Alright, I think that sounds like a consensus. Do we need to make that into a formal motion or anybody? Alright, um, should we go into hearing from our applicants?
Wait.
Yeah.
I think we should make a motion.
You want to make a motion, go ahead.
Yeah, it's a size committee. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, create the Town Administrator Search Hiring Committee um, to have six members on it, three residents, two staff, and one town council member, as per the charter.
Second. Any council discussion on the motion? Any council discussion on the motion?
Because of fear compromise.
Alright, so we'll go for our vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Pomashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Alright, so we'll go from hearing from applicants, we are gonna go in order in which they applied. So Mr. William Day, is he, he's not here, is he online? Yes, okay.
For clarity, he falls in the category of resident.
He would, but he is, uh, like, Assistant EMA Director, but that's extremely part-time too, but thank you for clarifying that.
Can you hear me?
You should have permissions.
Hello? Hello, everybody out there?
Mr. Day, you should have permissions, do you have audio on?
Uh, yes, my audio, audio's on. They can't hear me?
Now he's muted.
Alright, try that.
There he is.
Mr. Day, you should have permissions.
Yes, I'm trying to speak to you now.
You can hear us, right? Thumbs up?
And he's not muted anymore.
Yes.
He can hear us.
Clicking all the buttons here, but.
Yeah. Mr. Day, can you, you wanna call in? Might be easier.
Listen, Jim.
Or Jim, the technical speaker?
Yeah.
Uh, you got a number.
Video there, so we can see him, though.
You have a number, I made it.
Love technology when it works.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Day, I'm gonna hold you up to the speaker here, okay?
Anything, anything that will get this computer stuff happy.
Okay, I got somebody in the back who says yes. Let's hope so.
Hello?
Yeah, we hear you, Mr. Day, just speak loudly.
And Mr. Day, just share a little bit about why you want to be on the committee and what, you know, skills you think you'll bring.
Well, I think, uh, you, I hope you got my, uh, my request here, uh, the long-term resident, full-time resident of the town of Richmond for a number, number of years, and, uh, I've had experiences being on the town council, obviously, from, uh, what, what I've supplied you with, and, uh, long-term members school committee, knowing and, and having a, a good, uh, what I feel, uh, reading of the citizens of this community, and, uh, I thought it'd be an opportunity to, uh, continue to, uh, be, uh, active, uh, in spite of what, uh, one of the, uh, former councilmen sitting in your seat said, uh, I still have a a, a very active brain and a, and certainly a, a very active mouth. And so, uh, uh, you're gonna know where I'm coming from on, on all issues, there's not gonna be any, uh, any, uh, situations where I'm gonna be saying one thing and doing something different. Uh, I would like to take this, I would apologize, I had kind of hyper-stated, hypo-extended my, uh, knees, so I planned on being there, so I'd like to take one second to, uh, to, to shout out to Karen Pinch, uh, she, uh, not only was a, a very hard-working town employee, she was a, a, a very active member for us when we did the, all of the, uh, COVID, uh, vaccination down at South Road School in, in, uh, South Kingston, she, they were, she was there volunteering with us and, and working, so hopefully if we, we can get someone else to, uh, follow in her footsteps as far as being a a, a, not just a town, uh, nine-to-five person, but someone else that will come out and, uh, put some time into the, into the community, so I, I, I felt I had to say that, I planned on telling her that personally, but I I just had it to make it tonight, so, uh, if you have any questions, uh, uh, I think, uh, think I can be able to answer you truthfully.
Awesome, thank you so much, we can hear you now, that's great, um, so does anybody have any questions while we have them, just so we don't have to call them back up? Alright, um, thank you so much, Mr. Day. Uh, applicant, we have Josh Jordan, who would fall under the category of employee. No, thank you so much for handling it.
Hi, Josh Jordan, town employee, was a resident in Richmond for quite a few years, still own a lot of property in Richmond. I'd like to be on the committee, just, I own business, I have multiple businesses, I work, I work for the town, so I know that, I've been here for nine years now. Um, worked in other towns, Charleston, part-time Wesley, um, I've worked pretty few different places, so I see different, I've seen a lot of different managers, so, see how they work.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Alright, next we have, uh, Ms. Danielle Andrews. Under the category of employee, just so the public knows. I'm gonna do that every time.
Danielle Andrews, I'm the Finance Director, uh, I've only worked here for a year, I grew up in Richmond. And Karen is my second town administrator, I've worked for municipalities for thirty-two years.
Oh, wow, nice. Awesome.
Like to be on.
Nice, anybody having questions? I don't think I asked that last time, but nope, alright, thank you. Alright, on to Ella Johnson.
Yes, employee.
Yes, so I've had the privilege of working for the town in the capacity as Chief of Police for the last fourteen and a half years. I served on two prior search committees for the two previous, well, Karen Pinch as town administrator in Rob Rock. And I think it's important to hire the right individual, whoever that is. Because whoever you put in this position will kind of dictate, in a lot of ways, the success of the town, also morale of the employees. In a time where we're having a hard time retaining people. Having that balance of, you know, they're in charge at the same time, treating everybody with respect and profession. I've served on a number of other search committees, Town Hopkins, then for the Police Chief. Uh, Dave Hopkin, I, I say, uh, Dave Palmer, who was hired back in two thousand and eleven, I believe, has since retired. On the town of Charleston as well, I've interviewed hundreds of people, based on the nature of my work as a law enforcement officer for thirty-seven years. I think it's important to be fair to every applicant as well, so that there's structured questions. You can deviate from that a little bit, if they offer information that needs follow-up, but I think it's important everybody basically sees the same questions. Uh, we're gonna kind of evaluate them, uh, their responses.
Great, thank you. Questions for Chief, um, on to Laura Rieger, is she online?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I could hear Bill Day right from the beginning, so I, I'm not sure what was going on.
Oh.
Anyway, um, I've done e- extensive interviewing through the years, not recently, since I'm retired, but um, including worldwide for agents for the, uh, okay, you wanna look at me too, alright. There we go, um. Yeah, just frazzled from Fried and the Dogs, but, um, a lot of worldwide agents for our moving company, because we moved military personnel, and we wanted to make sure that they were getting the best move possible, so I've done, uh, extensive interviews through the years. Um, I've also been, uh, very involved with the town council, following the town council, should I say, and the planning board over the last few years, um, I'm part of the Finance Board, I've never missed a meeting. So, uh, I've already looked at Karen's the list that she prepared and said, wow, you know, she's, she's we're gonna have some, uh, big shoes to fulfill, even though she sits at such a tiny little girl, but, and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that we even have to be here to have the search committee at the moment, uh, I'd prefer that she'd be staying on. So I see John Melencamp just joined us, um, anyway. That's, uh, I'm very interested, I've been following it, I remember Mr. Setti, I remember Mr. Rock, I used to talk with him early in the morning. Uh, and I, I'd like to be part of the, part of the process, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, on to Counselor Pomashano.
Thank you, um, yeah, I, I was, um, very interested in putting my name in to find another way to serve the community in the selection for the next, uh, town administrator. Um, other than what I do in my work for the town, I have over twenty, uh, two years of experience working for, what many of you might know of APC or Schneider Electric. Um, and I've been involved in the hiring process and hired roughly about eight hundred people in that, that period of time to work in um, in inside sales, in, um, leaderships, in your leadership positions, so I also have a lot of experience, not only in, um, hiring the right talent for the competencies, but also for the success factors and the behaviors that you look for, for a person to have success in that role. So, uh, I'm very interested in bringing that experience to it, I've served as an HR, um, learning partner, a nature business partner, but HR learning partner in my career, so, uh, uh, helping to, to bring that expertise to serve the town and be part of this, uh, six-member group to select the next person who will try their best to fill those big shoes. Thank you.
Alright, no questions for him, we'll go on to, uh, Tom Maron.
Good evening, and thank you, Tom Maron, Richmond. Um, I'm really interested in this job, seeing Karen in, in action helped me to realize that she's probably more important than the five of you on the town council. She has more influence on this town, the direction of this town, the quality of life in this town, than any one of you, you'll be gone. She's the pro, she illustrates the importance of this job. And the demands of the job, the job description, you know, she's gotta handle public works, operations, finance, website, and on and on and on, I mean, not that she's an expert in anything, but she's the professional in this town. And we need, I'm, we're not talking about hiring her, but, I mean, that's the importance of the job, and she illustrates it. And it's a demanding job, and a critically important job, and you might think it's just signing checks or or doing some kind of administrative stuff, obviously not. Uh, you depend on the town administrator for advice, for guidance, and the people do as well. She's a visionary, she's, he, whoever it be. Um, so this position is critical to the future of the town, critical to the town council and the people. So that's why I'm interested in helping find, not just somebody who can sign checks, move paper around their desk from this side to that side, but I mean, a real leader, that this, administrator is an understatement for what this job is. What I bring to the table is over twenty years working and recruiting for datacom telecom companies all over the United States. I got paid ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars per person, they wouldn't pay me that unless I delivered the goods. Uh, and they pay me nothing unless I do that. So I've got a background extensive working with all kinds of people, I used to saw it on my, my resume and my application, but I encourage you, this isn't just filling a job, or, or another thing, I mean, this, this person's critical to the future of this community and to the people of the community, and to the quality of work that the town council does, thank you.
Thank you, any questions? Alright, um, we'll go on to Robin Woodmansey. Alright.
Robin Woodmansey, um, I'm interested as another way to be able to support our community. I'm someone who's very passionate about not only Charro, but Richmond as a whole, I've lived here in Richmond for over twenty years. Um, but professionally, I have a background in human resources, so about twenty years, taking some time off for children, but whether it be recruiting, um, at corporate levels or also employee relations, so um, respectfully what Mr., uh, Chief Johnson stated, um, being able to put together a very straightforward questionnaire for all of our applicants, something that I had done extensively with working at Citizens Bank. Like, like hiring large call center environments, lots of interviews, wanting to make sure we're asking those specific questions and really getting to the bones of not only the experience, but the kind of person that we want in this role, so.
Awesome, any questions for Robin? Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alright, on to Helen Sheehan.
Hi, Helen Sheehan. So you asked why, why I would like this job. I'd like it because I'm committed to the town. And I think I bring to the study a balanced view. I'm interested in someone who does have heart for the town, who has compassion for the people, is very good at keeping her position, there's authority in that position, with authority, with compassion. And I would like someone to continue to help the town to look at the issues that it has with an open mind, and sometimes push the edges when they need to be pushed. So I think, I, as a, I, I was a business owner for over twenty years, I sold that business in twenty twenty. I'm still working part-time for the person who bought it from me. So I did so many of the things that are on the job list for Karen. So I understand the difficulty of managing people, hiring, sometimes having to let people go, talk to them about their behavior. You know, all the things that run with that. And I have the time, because I only work part-time.
Awesome, thank you so much. No questions for Helen, right, okay, um, on to our last applicant, Gary Parker, oh, there he is, I thought I didn't see him for a minute.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, thank you very much, Gary Parker, Richmond. The, uh, tough acts to follow, certainly, uh, regarding my motivation for wanting to participate in the search for Karen's replacement. Uh, I, I feel that it is, as been said before, the, the town administrator position is one of incredible intensity. Leadership intensity, management intensity, especially in an environment where we've got some fiscal austerity potentially, and, and the idea that we have a continually, sort of a changing workforce, so the ability, so my sense is that, um, it's a vital, it's a vital role, this, uh, the search committee. For, um, my qualifications, uh, regarding that, I have been involved, uh, deeply with interviewing and selecting candidates for high reliability operations in Department of Defense, as well as in major airlines, as well as in my old flight school. Um, so, as, as we've mentioned a couple of times, that suite of questions, that, you know, what are we trying to get? What are we trying to tease out from the applicants? Um, that is, is, is a critical piece, and so being able to game through that and work through that possibly and, and find out the answer. Uh, as well currently, I know how hard it can be just to get, how hard it can be just to get people in the door. Um, as Economic Development Chairman, and with, with the team right now, just getting people to volunteer and, and get them in the door, in the building, so we can even interview them or talk, discuss with them. That's, um, that's challenging, and I have some insights from my really my work with my flight school, on how to advertise for that, you know, putting our, putting notifications in journals and things like that, to try to get the word out, you know, public administration rooms. So at any rate, um, critical task, and I, and I feel I do have some resident qualifications and experience.
Awesome.
To your question, then.
I think so, I don't know if anybody has, nope.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, um, so typically what we do is we would throw out motions to appoint people, go from there, um. I guess I'll kick us off with a motion to appoint Jim Pomashano as our council liaison to the commission.
Second.
Alright, any council discussion? Alright, we'll go for a roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Pomashano.
Stay?
If you'd like to.
You can vote for yourself.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Here we go, yeah.
It's not for compensation, he can vote for himself, yes.
Thank you, and Wilcox, yes.
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Um, alright, so I don't want anybody to feel like their voices are left out, so I want everyone to have the opportunity to make a non-obvious motion. Um, so, we'll go, who wants to kick us off?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint, uh, Chief Johnson to the committee.
Second.
Alright, any council discussion on that one? Alright, we'll go for a roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Pomashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. And Wilcox, yes. A little note here, we got our one, we got our two. Sure, sticking with the employee theme, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Danielle Andrews to the board.
Second.
All right, me. All right, we'll go for a roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right.
Thank you to Josh for applying as well.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Josh, for applying. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. So now we need a couple residents. Sure, go ahead, Counselor Reynolds.
I'll make a motion to appoint William Day.
Second.
We got our motion, our second. Any discussion on that? We'll go for a roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, I'm going to look to this side because you two haven't made a motion yet, if you'd like to.
Motion to nominate Laura Rigger for the Review Committee.
Second.
All right, so we have our motion and our second. Any council discussion on this one? All right, we'll go for our vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
No.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Um, so we have one more, Counselor Dinsmore, if you'd like to throw one out there since you haven't yet.
Uh.
Oh, we don't have one more, sorry.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tom Marin. Recede on the search committee for town administrator.
Don't hear a second, so that we're not going to talk about that motion. I will make a motion then to appoint Robin Woodmansey to the search committee.
Second.
Any council discussion on that one? Sure, go ahead, Mark.
I, I think it's important that we have diversity of thought on the, on the, on the group. I think Robin is, is qualified. I had someone else in mind as a resident. So I, I would not vote for Robin, but I think she's qualified. But I had, I had someone else, I think. I think again, to get a little more diversity of thought, I, I was thinking of Helen, but.
Yeah, that's fair. Thanks for sharing who you'd appoint because then it's like, wait a minute, where would you go instead? And it helps, I think, us make decisions. Counselor Palmigano, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think Robin, you know, as the name came up, Robin's name is before, you just mentioned Helen. You know, this is a, it's a good selection. I, I just want to reflect on some of the states made by Mr. Parker. I think he also brings, you know, it's, we, we've, we've, we have six that we choose, right? I think he also brings, as he does with everything else that he's involved with, an amazing structure and a process to things. So and it's, you know, I spent maybe fifteen years judging martial arts tournaments. And when you stand in front of a black belt who came in fifth place and have to explain to them why they didn't win, it's not that they weren't great, it's just they weren't that best that day. And I think we have a lot of black belts out there and we're trying to select the six. So I just want to reflect on Mr. Parker. No offense to Mr. Woodmansey at all.
Yeah, I think that based on her response, she did have a lot of the structure. And in with everyone having all this structure, you have too many people with too much structure, who's, who's
Yeah.
leader are you going to take? But I appreciate that feedback as well. Sure, go ahead, Jeff.
I just want to support the feedback that was given from Jim about Gary Parker.
Thank you. Any further council discussion?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
I mean, this is tough. There, there's a lot of good candidates here. I echo what Jim said. Putting together a committee of six, we had a lot of applicants. I don't think anyone should take it personally if they, they don't get on. Because I think everyone who's applied has a lot of passion for volunteering for the town and putting the effort, the time and effort into this, which is, as many said, very important for the town. Just, it's a tough choice.
Yeah, I definitely agree. And to, we had a lot of volunteers and experienced people have actually kind of surprised, Miss Sheehan, you didn't mention that you were on council. So you had that experience as well in addition to all your business experience. But sure, go ahead, Jim.
I mean, we, we just, we just made that motion to have six. Do we have the power to amend that if we think that? And if it would be prudent for the decision, how many people are on it? Would it be possible or appropriate for us to change the number of six?
Again.
I suppose that would be a decision of council.
That would be a decision like after we finish with the motion on the floor, really.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So any further council discussion on the appointment of Robin Woodmansey? All right, we'll go for a roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
No.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Um, Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, so we do have our six. Well, you have Counselor Palmigano.
When would I make a motion to consider changing that number?
That would be now.
Make a motion to change the number of six members to eight members.
I don't hear a second.
Yeah, I, I.
Sorry, I don't hear a second.
I'll make a motion to, to go to seven.
So I will withdraw my motion?
Well, your motion didn't get a second.
I didn't get a second.
So we have a, we have another proposed motion that does not have a second to increase this to seven.
A second, I'd like to discuss it.
Sure, we'll open up our discussion. You want to go ahead first, either Mark or Dan?
No, I think, you know, I think we, in going through this process, we've reached a point where we have at least one other person who is qualified. We may have two, but I think eight's too many. I think we have to make a choice.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, I, I've already expressed who my next person would be as, as opposed to Robin. And Robin's on, so so I think, you know, that would be, that would be who I would nominate if we went to seven. But I'm open to obviously other.
Go ahead, Counselor Mad Nick.
Sure, you know, like I said, this is really tough. And you have both Ms. Sheehan and Mr. Parker. And Ms. Sheehan has been very involved in the town and Mr. Parker has on and off. He's now the chairperson of the EDC. Both have very different backgrounds, bring very different things to this committee. I'm really torn on either one of them. I, I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I'm, I'm torn. I would appoint either of them. I, I don't know, with the motion on the floor to increase the group, I'm hesitant to do that. But that's what council wants. I'm not going to throw out the baby with the bathwater and I'll go for it. Yeah, so that's my thoughts. I would appoint either of them. Counselor Dinsmore, I saw your hand.
Yeah. I I did want an odd number. So I mean, seven. And I do agree with the two, the two names that we're talking about, though, I mean, I guess I would be inclined to do it, seven.
All right, so any further council discussion on the motion to increase the group to seven? All right, we'll go for our roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. So we now have another opening on this group. Like I said, I would appoint either, so I will, I don't want to make it like a race to see who acts for the floor faster. Like, what would, how would you guys like to handle it?
When you make the motion.
I'm motioning to nominate Gary Parker.
Second.
All right, so we have our motion and our second. Any council discussion on this? Sure, just to reiterate, I would appoint either. So, Ms. Sheehan, I don't want you to take it personally. I don't want anybody who wasn't appointed to take it personally, including Mr. Jordan. Loved working with you on council. You're always pleasant to me, even though we sat literally across from each other the whole time. So I am going to vote to appoint Gary Park. We'll go for our roll call vote, hearing other council discussion. Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
I, I'm going to say no, just because I'm going to stick to my
Big steer gun.
Kind of loyal.
All right. He's a loyalist. I'm going to vote yes. So we have our group of seven. Congratulations to those who are appointed. Welcome to the party. Thank you for your service to the town and yeah, we'll move on to our next item of business. Which is not as fun. Discussion and consideration of Jennifer Fornier's, sorry if I butchered that, resignation as the Assistant Finance Director.
Motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer Fornier as Assistant Finance Director with regret and thanks for her many years of service.
Second.
Yeah, our motion, our second. Any council discussion? We'll go for our vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, on to discussion and consideration of Erin's resignation from the Recreation Committee.
Motion to accept the resignation of Erin Lees from the Recreation Commission with regret.
Second.
We got our motion, our second. Any council discussion here? All right.
I don't know how we're going to do the tree letting, but we'll figure it out.
She'll handle that in her role as clerk and hopefully still not interim because I hope we find somebody by then. Um, we'll go for our roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, on to our consent agenda. I'm going to pull one C. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull? Sure, go ahead, Mark.
I need to pull one E and F so I can abstain.
E and F have been removed. Anybody else?
E and D.
E and D, because we have more. We'll just handle those individually, I suppose. Any others to pull? All right, hearing none, we'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve one, A, B, two, A, E, C, and D, three. And that's it. That's the end. Have a second, please?
Second.
All right, we'll go for our roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Point of clarity, you were doing A, B, C, and D?
Of, of item two.
Of item two, okay, yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, so I'm going to go in order. One C was the item that I had called. On page four, when we were discussing the appointments to the planning board, I would just like to note that Christopher Sapara was not present and did not reach out in advance regarding rescheduling. Just so there's some clarification as to why we didn't address that item. And then on page six, I wanted to add more detail on the GZA study, that's such an important project. And I know I can, I can send this to you later, Erin, because I know sometimes that you prefer that when I say a lot, but I wanted to say that GZA was unable to attend. Karen Pinch read his update regarding the environmental study. We're informed that the required communication to the area's tribal community, historic preservation society were sent out. We're waiting on HUD's pre-review of several sections. They're currently severely understaffed and this project has been sent to the West Coast representative, to A, West Coast representative. The environmental review is not final, but results indicate that there will be no adverse impacts that would require adjustments or stand away from funding. Just want to add that to our minutes. Any other amendments to that or objections to that? All right, hearing that, I'll make a motion to approve item one C with amendments.
Second.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? All right, we'll go for our roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Staying.
Abstaining. Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Next was one C, and I believe, Mark, you pulled that just to abstain. Or no, you did. So we can go straight to a vote? All right, I'll make a motion to approve item one D. And we got a second by Counselor Dinsmore. We'll go for our roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Staying.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Same with one E?
You can do E and F together.
We can do E and F together? Good, thank you. Um, make a motion to approve item one E and F.
Second.
All right, we'll go for our roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Abstain.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, we've made it through consent agenda. On to public forum. The purpose of public forum is to give members of the public an opportunity to address the town council about items not on the agenda. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. You will have one opportunity to address the council during public forum. This is out of courtesy to others who wish to speak to ensure we have equal time for all. There will be a timer that will indicate when your three minutes are up, and I ask that you finish your thoughts. If you need more time, we welcome you to submit your comments in writing to the town clerk to be included as a part of the record in the communications section of the agenda. All communication should be directed to the president and not any other person present. That one was included in our, yeah, thank you. Always got my back, that one. All right, so I see Ms. Sheehan's hand up for public comment.
I just want to thank you for your consideration and I wish the committee well.
Thank you. Yes, sure, go ahead, sir. Please use state name for the record. Sorry I didn't say that.
My name is Joe Bajark. I live at one thirty-eight KG Ranch Road. Our road is disgusting. It's torn apart. It's and according to the town guys, they're not going to do anything with it until the state fixes the drainage. Well, we're not even on the five-year plan. We're not going to have a road in two years. It's, it's just a whole road all the way down the southern end of it, or the northern end, excuse me, and Cherry Lane is just, it's, it's horrible. You can't even drive on it. You have a coffee in your hand and you're, it just spills. That's how bad the road is. The trees are all overgrown. I went through in my RV the other day and took the top off. I took a dome off the top of my RV, which is twelve-six, which I thought the minimum is thirteen-six, but I don't even think the ladder truck can get down that road. I mean, it's like we're over in Never Never Land over there. Nothing, you know, the guys come over, they try patching, they try fixing, they try cutting, they've done what they can do, but according to everyone I've talked to, it's the state that needs to do something. I think somebody needs to start pushing. I've called state, I've called DEM and they, they say it's the town's fault. The town says it's the state's fault. But meanwhile, the residents, we're dying on it. The road's horrible, absolutely horrible. It's, I don't even know how they're going to plow it. So if you could, if there's something you guys can do, push it somehow, do something because it's, it's not going to make it.
Yeah, no, I understand. That has been a priority of all of ours. For sure. I know that area is, is difficult and complicated for various reasons. It is a town road. And then I know there's a lot to it as far as the, the flooding. That, that's really the biggest issue.
And it drains Route Three and, but, I mean, from what I understand, we're not even on the five-year plan. I, I mean, we're not going to make it.
Yeah.
So if you could look at that.
Yeah, we will. Sure, go ahead, Jeff.
I was just going to say, order, order, because during public forum, we're not supposed to respond because it could go into a discussion, but perhaps it's something we could add to the next council meeting to have an update from the state, perhaps what their official stance is on that road and with the interim or whomever administrator could get a, get more of a conclusive answer for us where we stand so that we're just not nebulous.
So to address your point of order, we can respond to public forum. It's, I, I can, I'd be more than happy to share the
Even if it might become an item that we would vote on in a future meeting?
Um, we.
We're not taking any action.
Yeah, we're not taking it.
Well, good, then we're going to put it on the agenda for the meeting. We'll talk about it more.
I had spoke to Megan Cotter about that. She was going to look into it.
Good.
I talked to her on the phone, but, like I said, according to the town guys, there's really nothing else they can do. There's just and the dirt road over there, it just washes down onto the road and it's, it's a mess.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else for roll call? Sure, good. Hey, Mr. Parker.
I will send it to you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President, Gary Parker, Richmond. Since the Economic Development Commission doesn't have a speaking role typically yet on the agenda, I just wanted to take just a couple of moments just to say thank you to the Rich Task Force for taking the lead on some of their items. To Vice President Reynolds and Counselor Mad Nick for doing some great, it looks like you're doing some, starting some great research down off of, for, for Route one thirty-eight perhaps with Department of Transportation. One, one piece of this, though, is the harmonization of efforts. And so as, as Counselor Palmigano said, I love structure, you know, well, at a certain point, it's kind of required. I mean, granted, we, it's nice to sort of operate like a jazz band, but at a certain point, we've got people going in different directions and organizations spending volunteer time as well as their own resources and possibly political capital to possibly run down a project which may or may not work, depending on, you know, if we did the analysis in advance. And so EDC has been having, we've had meetings and with the banks, we've had people come to our meetings who are major developers who have, actually have a dog in the fight about the western side of one thirty-eight. And so it'd be really good for us to harmonize our, our efforts so we can really collect the information that we need to. But that does not at all, of course, say anything. It's, it's wonderful that the task force is doing its job. And gentlemen, thank you very much for these things. So just want to shout out harmonizer.
Great, thank you. Oh, so now he's going to respond to everybody.
Yeah, I am. Just so that you're aware, and so we do have a Richmond task, a Rich Task Force tomorrow at four, five-thirty here in Chambers, so Wednesday the sixteenth. So I know we have a representative, Mr. Brier, who's coming to EDC, but certainly the public is welcome to come. And I'll leave that to you. Um, and I'll leave it to you to decide, but we'd love to have as many, um, people from the boards and commissions that wanna come and listen, and even if they wanna offer thoughts, but we have a wonderful representative from EDC as well, so. You and the public are aware.
Yes, sir, and in fact, the EDC itself is, uh, we've been, you know, as, as individuals, spending some time going to different council or different boards, wellness committee, looking to see if we can harmonize our efforts with those committees, because at a certain point, it all ties together, and if, and if we can, if we can look at how these synergies work, then, then that's a good thing, rather than us, again, going in different, different vectors. One thing though, as always, if, to put a plug in for recruitment for the EDC, we absolutely, uh, we're identified, we're narrowing down pretty closely our, what we do, like who we are, what we do, and we answer the mail for the, uh, the, uh, to the town council as well as the residents. So, uh, we're, we're looking for people who have some expertise. We'll put a notice out on the Facebook page.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, madam.
Um, anybody else for a public comment, anybody online? Sure, go ahead, sir. Is there anybody online after he's done, okay.
Good evening again, Tom Marron, Richmond. Three questions regarding the finance report. One, if I read it right, there's a three hundred thousand dollar surplus. Congratulations on that. When will the people receive their checks for that three hundred thousand dollar surplus? That's question number one. Question number two, did the budget referendum recognize the fact that you were running a three hundred thousand dollar surplus? And was that included in the budget you proposed to taxpayers? And number three, very easy question, could we have the finance director do a two minute summary and recap of that report? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and there was nobody online? Alright. Shot off my timer. We'll go on to reports, we're gonna kick it off with the town administrators' final report. Make it a good one.
So, um, obviously with the search committee now being seated, I wanted you all to have a formal job description. Hopefully I've thought of everything, um, if there's anything else you've thought of, you know, we're happy to put it in, but it's not basically just looking for the blessing for it being shared with the committee.
Alright, does anybody have anything they'd like to share or add or amend or comment on, question? Yeah, sure, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, no, I'm just gonna say, I, I appreciate you sharing that over, I think it's a great, like, baseline document for us to work at. I think it's, um, we have such diversity of thought and experience of people coming in, I think it'll be a great part of that, um, search committee to review that and see what might be modifications.
Sure.
For different things, so.
Obviously, you'll have to do, the leave qualifications and other things that aren't necessarily part of the job description, but that'll be, you know,
Including but not limited to.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So, all those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Sure, sure, go ahead councillor Dinsmore.
Yeah, I mean, I, I read it and it looks really good, very detailed. The only thing that I wanted to speak on was the, where it talked about grant applications. In parentheses, it says as time permits. I think as time permits takes a little bit away from the, like, it's an important, it's an important part of your job, you wrote, wrote many grants, you're good at it, I mean, I think we want the same for the next person coming in. I don't know, I just think that, that as time permits part kinda, like I said, takes away from the importance of the, uh, issues of grants.
Yeah, I think it's just, there are so many that come across, um, we just can't possibly address them all, so I guess that's kind of where as time permits.
Awesome, yeah, I, I agree with what Jim had said, thank you for putting it together so we can look at it. And so it, is the search committee gonna be the ones to kind of finally, like, make finalize this and then post it? That's what I had envisioned, so I just wanted to see, make sure that's clear. I guess a promotion on the floor to bless this, uh, do you want to add something first, or go ahead?
I mean, I, I think, you know, I, I, I get what Jeff is saying, and maybe we can take the parenthetical out. I mean, it's all as time for, it's all, I mean, it's, it's, you know, so I, I, I get it, it's, you know, obviously, everyone has to prioritize their time, um, and obviously what's happening in the here and now is gonna take priority and other things maybe a little off, so it doesn't say, you know, apply for every possible grant in the world. So, I, I think, you know, I, I think it's, it's a point we'll take into, you can take that.
Okay. Sure, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, it was just, Mark, you made me reflect, you know, um, you know, in my professional world, if, if you have a job description that actually represents seventy percent of what you actually do, you're lucky.
Yeah.
Because there are so many tangential functions that you're doing, and I think it'll be good to try to capture what's priority, what's most important for the running of the town, running of the staff, um, and then finding opportunities to further serve the town, I think this, uh, search committee should take that into consideration. And yeah, so all of that, I would say we could take a red line and then bring that back as a, as a recommendation from the search committee.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to bless the town administrator's job description with that amendment for the final approval of the search committee.
Second.
Good motion and second, any further council discussion on it? Alright, we'll go for our roll call vote councillor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madnick.
Yes.
Tomashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Alright, on to number B, or I'm sorry, letter B.
Yeah, so the next item is, um, discussion and consideration of amendments to chapter two point four recreation department with authorization for the clerk to advertise, um, there is an attachment there. I know it's, there's not a lot of red line there, but basically it kind of outlines the, the general overview of the, we had talked about it being a community services department, um, with a director and then oversight of recreation, human services and senior.
Yeah. So I had actually a, a lot of comments on this, I don't know if other councillors did as well. So bear with me while I just kind of share them, we'll go from there. Cuz I reviewed this as like a draft ordinance coming to us like any others would, and I just, before we put it to public hearing, would like it to be as final as possible, so the public can see what we're thinking. So I'm gonna go right down, starting off right, um, at the top in the header, since we're amending it to say recreation slash human services, I think that should be in the header as well. So the header would read recreation slash human services department. And then under responsibilities, it says the following section shall be added, amended, or read to read in its entirety, I don't think that's supposed to be there, I think that was just like a note to self, but that shouldn't be in our ordinance that we're, like, removing something. And then I had to look at it side by side to what was on the ordinances, and when I did that, I noticed that the, the new one that was added, that was number eight. Was very similar to number one. So I wanted to completely just eliminate number one and switch number eight to be number one, because it felt duplicative. And also, when I was looking at our ordinances, they were A, B, C, D, and these are one, two, three, four, so I just think for consistency's sake, like, I don't know where that change happened, or what happened there, it might have just been a formatting thing, like you hit the number. And then, in addition to what she has for number, or what we have, I don't know who drafted this.
Oh, Chris.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I'm, I'm misgendered again.
Yeah, I know.
In addition to what Chris had drafted there, um, it said, like, what was number eight, establish and maintain oversight of recreational activities for residents in collaboration with, and I think that should switch to under the supervision of the recreation commission, just to align with our charter. That was a, a question on the charter in twenty twenty two. I voted against it, I, I thought I did not want that change, but the, the people do want that change, so I just want it to be a little bit, like, more aligned with that to show under the supervision of the recreation commission. And I don't think it needs to have the summer camp director there at all. But I deleted that, and then kind of the point where your job description is all encompassing, right, like we were talking about that, John, just a moment ago. I say, would say after under the supervision of the rec commission, including but not limited to oversight of programs and budgets. And then I removed hiring related to such programs, because there was another, another line later that said hiring. And I liked that language better, because the, it was referencing the recommendation to council, cuz council does the hiring. Which was another thing that was on the, uh, referendum that I didn't agree with. So, once I saw that one thing, it kind of made me go a little bit down a rabbit hole, where I thought that number nine should also be moved up, just so they're together. And so the number nine, which was manage and support programs and activities in collaboration with the senior activities, which that part makes sense, that it should be in collaboration with him. And I did notice there it said chairman, I know we have a chair man now, but it could be anybody in the future, and I think we should just use gender neutral terms as chair in our ordinances. And then I did the same kind of change at the end, where I, I removed the hiring, um, of such related programs. And also number ten, you know, support and oversight of the maintenance of the building, I thought we'd just kind of move it up, just for organizational purposes. And then, number four was the recommendations for hiring of seasonal employees. I don't really know if it's just gonna be seasonal, I don't know why it was added that she could hire employees for programs, so I thought it would make sense to recommend, uh, recommend changing it to make recommendations regarding seasonal and add non-seasonal employees to that. And then just changes the numbers. I believe that was the majority of my changes. And then I wanna make sure I got all my notes here, cuz my comments got crazy. I believe that was all of them. Actually, that wasn't as, oh, no, I'm sorry, I found it. I wanted to add a, a thirteen to, well, sorry, it should be letters, let me change it, but I have it as thirteen here, which would be provide the town council and recreation commission a monthly report with department updates and activities. That's a report that I saw frequently in my prior term, and I don't think we've received one in quite some time, and I keep wondering when we're gonna get one, wondering when we're gonna get one, and not wanting to overstep and, um, directing a town employee to do it. So I'd like to see that more consistent, um, across the board with all our departments, but, um, specifically here, I haven't seen one in a while. So, with that, I welcome feedback and any other suggestions that anybody had as they were reviewing these ordinances. Sure, go ahead councillor.
Question about what you had said, number eight, establish and maintain oversight of recreation activities for all residents, and you had said not, you took out in collaboration with recreation commission and you put?
In super, under the supervision of.
Okay, it's under the supervision. So that, that, that is because what did not change is that the recreation director still technically reports to a volunteer board because of the way it's written.
Right.
Which we tried to change. So that's why you have that verbiage, although it sounds strange to have a hired, a, a position reporting into a volunteer board, but that's why we're doing it, that's why you're in there. And so it's just to align to what the charter says.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
I'll, I'll, I, I agree with, um, Sam about the title of the chapter, it's not necessarily the recreation department anymore, because we've expanded the scope of responsibilities of this position, so I felt it was, one of my comments is important to change the chapter title.
Do you have any other comments you wanted to bring in?
You, you hit a lot of the same ones that I had some concerns over. I'm glad that we went through it. The question I think we're, have in front of us now is, you submitted a lot of modifications and revisions. We're gonna go to a public hearing with that, not in front of us, we'll be able to see at the same time the public does, and that's not a problem. I don't wanna, I don't wanna delay it any longer.
Yeah.
It's because it'd be August seventeenth, is that our next meeting?
Karen's like, I don't know when your next meeting is, don't look at me for that. Yeah, no, I agree, I don't wanna delay, but I also want clarity, um, you know, I mean, clarification. And, sorry to do this, but I did see one last thing, but I think Jeff might appreciate, num, number eleven, says assist identifying the need for grant support and monitor administration of grant programs, it doesn't say draft grant applications. So I wanted to amend it to say, uh, identify the need for grant support, drafting grant applications, and monitor the administration.
I concur.
Yeah.
I think we should wrap that, that in, I think that's really important for the town.
Yeah, she's already doing it, to be quite honest, like, she's already getting us a, a good amount of grants, so. Yeah, any other comments before we go to another councillor, councillor Madnick?
No, thank you.
I think I saw Jeff as well, or no, maybe I didn't. Erin, did you have a comment?
Um, just to provide some clarity on the hiring language, um, many of the summer camp director is seasonal, the assistant summer camp director is seasonal, and all the councillors are seasonal. So maybe for, in collaboration, a recommendation to council for hiring of those seasonal positions and identify them versus.
Right, well, that was already there, so I'm sorry, so.
Cuz those positions are, those position titles don't appear anywhere else in our ordinance, so it might clean that up as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's in this ordinance either. Well, it was, my, I actually had one of my suggestions was to remove the summer camp director.
Well, that's what I, that's what I mean, to remove that.
Yeah.
Maybe add language in hi- hiring related to such programs, maybe recommendation of hiring, clean that up to add a definition of seasonal employees.
Make recommendations regarding hiring of seasonal and then just add like summer camp employees.
I would add those position titles to that.
Okay. That makes sense. Any opposition to that? Alright. Any other comments on that? So do we wanna see another draft before we go to a public hearing? Uh, our attorney is nodding, so, uh.
Why don't I get, why don't I make these red line changes and I'll send it to you?
Okay. That would be great. Do we need a motion to ask you to do that?
No.
Okay, alright, well.
Just gonna do it.
Alright. Yes, make it so, alright. Any other conversation before we move on to the next item on the agenda? Again, thank you for bearing with me with that, um, Karen, you have more to your report?
Uh, yes, so the next is discussion and consideration of amendments to chapter four point three four senior activities, and that is essentially to reflect the change in the department's structure, where senior activities would kind of fall under of the this new department.
Alright, do we have any councillor comments on this? Go ahead councillor Madnick.
One minor comment, so we, we, we're calling it the recreation director and or human services director, changing the title of the ordinance we just discussed. Should we, um, just make sure that the underlying portion where we're changing responsibility here, it's consistent with the title, that we're gonna change the previous ordinance to?
Yeah, that's actually the one note I had as well, we're in sync on this one. I had saying recreation and or human services implies there's two departments, so if you just say recreation slash human services directors. Cuz there's no and or, cuz there's no and, and there's no or.
One of the other things I was considering is we can get away from a title completely, and you just refer back to section two point four.
I like the title, but I'm open to others. Alright, so we have that one amendment, um, which I don't think we should advertise for public hearing, I think they should be together, unless anybody else disagrees. Okay. So, I'm trying to think, all right, if you don't mind making that minor change as well, and we'll review it at the next meeting. Alright. Karen, you're not done yet.
No. Uh, the last one is discussion and consideration of amendments to chapter eight point one eight solid waste disposal. This essentially changes the fees for, um, certain items at the transfer station. We did do a small study of, um, local nearby transfer stations and what their, uh, fees are. And so this kind of aligns us more closely with them. It would in, increase mattresses, non-recyclable mattresses and box springs, seventy from fifty-five. It would increase propane tanks from three to five dollars. Boats from two fifty to two hundred and sixty dollars a ton. And I think the strike through underline is missing, number twelve, construction and demolition would go from one forty to one fifty, and actually, there's a, there's a section. And actually, there's a, there's a section C that's actually the same as number twelve. Um, so I think we probably should eliminate that section C.
Okay.
Um, and then it also increases, um, the tipping fees. Um, as you can see, almost all the categories.
Any counsel feedback on this one?
Yes, madam chair.
Go ahead.
So we, we had a discussion offline about this, um, just to want to state for the record, if you can correct me. But right now, we're currently losing money in the transfer station because our fees are not commiserate with how much we're actually paying to. Bring our refuse to the proper location.
That's correct.
So part of this is to get us in line so that we're not actually having, um, uh, revenue loss. We don't need to make a profit, but it should at least be close to breaking even. Um, one of the questions I did have is I know that we've discussed. A yard waste, um, composting that the state was going to handle. But we're, we're charging a hundred and ten dollars per ton for that. Is the anticipation in the future to charge to collect that as well, even though the state's going to take it? Or is it just going to be residents dropping off at will?
There's going to be a cost to us to transport it to wherever it goes. So we have an opportunity to either bring it to Richmond Sand and Stone or to the landfill. Um, our refuse hauler who is Rambo would, one way or another, regardless of where we take it. There's going to be a cost to us to transport it where it has to go.
Okay.
So, um, Gary and Danielle and I, um, Cody as well, I think he's here.
He's in the back.
Um, work with Danielle to try to kind of nail down a number on that, to try to figure out, you know, how we could break even on that. So, you know, that's something that's new. We may have to adjust a year from now to make sure that, you know, that covers our costs or isn't overly burdensome. Um, but that is in line also with other towns.
Awesome. Are you sure? Go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, have we reached out to Richmond Sand and Stone about them possibly coming to pick up this, the wood that? They're going to take it. It's very close and I mean, they're going to, I think they make money off it. They shred it up and use it as mulch or something like that, so. Maybe they will come and pick it up for nothing.
Cody, is that an option with them or no?
Uh, I'd have to ask them now. They can say, probably not. I don't think they have roll-off camps. Our plans for the residents to dump it in a forty-yard dumpster. Then have our licensed contract, Rambo, move it off.
Awesome, thank you. All right, that answers your question. Good. I had one minor revision that I saw, um, it's out of substance, but on a number nine, on the list of tipping fees on page four. The word each, um, got deleted, uh, for number nine in the list.
Propane tanks?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it just, once I see it, I cannot see it. Any other comments on this? Yeah, sure, you can.
Um, it just a couple, because I, I, it wasn't part of the conversation around the fiscal solvency of our fees. Right, that council man said we're losing money. While the tipping fees, it looks like we've only increased by like a dollar. So maybe it's an opportunity to better understand that in its entirety later. Like, how, how does that help? Like, we really haven't increased a lot in the fees, so are we still losing money? How close are we? What else might we need to do in the future? That's all.
Okay. All right, hearing nothing more on this, um, do we want to also include this with the same advertisement for the other? As far as that goes, or do you want us to advertise this as this? Would you prefer staff that we do?
Uh, let's do this one, that one. We don't have too many on it.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I don't think, because there's not many, there, there are grammar amendments.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
All right, counselor Reynolds, do you want to throw a motion forward then?
Uh, I'd make a motion to authorize the town clerk to authorize for public hearing. Discussion and consideration of amendments to Richmond Code of Ordinances, chapter eight point one eight, solid waste disposal and recycling.
Second.
All right, so we got our motion in our second. Any further council discussion? All right, we'll go for a vote, counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mandy.
Yes.
Uh, Paul Machado.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, Karen, you're all set now. Um, Chief Johnson, yep. This is not your last report.
No, thank God I got to do Hipto, it's the third time over here. I didn't do that weeks ago, so. Uh, I would like to share with you, first of all, this is credit to Karen because of the relationships, professional relationships. She, she's developed over the course of her adult life with the state police as a town minister of the town. They, you know, sometimes people maybe see your caller ID and they do not answer the phone. They get an email, they do not respond. Karen's the kind of person, she's networked statewide outside of our state. And people want to talk to her because she's straightforward and honest with her. She never asked for anything that's not reasonable. The congressional discretionary funds, uh, a lot of that had to do with Karen's contacts and efforts with Senator Reed. Or former congressman Landman. We were able to secure this grant and that, like most federal grants, you get the green, you get the initial award, you're like, yes! You're years away from being able to spend the money. But just knowing that that was coming was great. And I, I would direct your attention to the photos in the background.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, nice. Uh, what's funny is the pics on the left is before, but that looked worse. That's with some patch repair in the wall. I want to send a shout out to DPW for the work that they do. They saved the town on just the thousands of dollars and things that we would otherwise have to go to bid for. We had a lot of old equipment, old lockers in there they had to take out for us, uh, some patch repair in between, contracting this out. This went to a competitive bid. The Stefano brothers did all the flooring, it's Pentac concrete coating, it's absolutely beautiful, easy to clean. Uh, we had some leftover money after that initial for the locker room upgrade. So we went to the other parts of the basement, including the roll call room, uh, the hallway, the two bathrooms. I mean, look at that floor product, uh, ceiling tiles, fun. I mean, this is, this is where officers go down to change before they start their shift. Where do you want to be? What gives you a freedom morale to want to go out on patrol? Where do you want to stand barefoot in that basement? If you look at the last picture, I think that's probably the worst picture. That one. Do you want to be barefoot on that blue carpet with the old green lockers?
Was it the carpet? I thought it was like the gym mat.
That was the carpet that they scored for free, probably twenty years.
Allowed.
Um, I just, I just think it's night and day. The grant was, uh, managed by the USDA. For a hundred and ninety, forty of it, we had to match and that came out of ARPA funding. And we're under budget on that project. It took some time, as most things do when you're dealing with multiple contractors and equipment that has to be ordered and somewhat back. Back ordered, but, uh, I'm just really pleased with it. I want to thank DPW for their assistance. Uh, that's pretty much it.
That's amazing.
Is that a name? I would give you a grant, pictures don't really do it justice. You got to see the space, but it is, is really a, a pleasure to have a professional workspace downstairs.
Yeah, especially that before bathroom picture.
Yeah.
That was pretty rough. It looks like in a, where you put the real interrogation, right?
We don't do waterboarding, so. Uh, the next, uh, item I have is requesting consideration and approval of an award. For a, an electrical bid, for electrical work at the animal control pound to Lighthouse Electric LLC. For an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. We initially started by inviting electricians out to the site to see if we could do this between the one thousand and five thousand dollar number. Without going to a competitive bid. But once we added the, the fire alarm equipment, uh, somewhere comfortable doing that and the cost went over five thousand. So we then posted after getting three prices, one vendor opted out. And then when the other two were notified and it went out on a, on the public website for advertising, we only had one bidder. And it was one of the, the folks that had actually done a, a site visit previously, has all the requisite certifications and licenses.
Awesome, thank you so much. Do we have a motion? Go ahead, Jim.
Motion to approve the, uh. Uh, awarding the bid for electrical work at the animal control pound to Lighthouse Electric LLC.
Second.
We have our motion in our second. Any council questions or discussions?
Discussion.
Yeah.
Um, in the printout, it said the funds for this project were donated by the Ella Campbell Foundation and will cover the cost of the work.
Correct.
That's awesome.
It is awesome. I was going to mention that, but I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah, yeah. So the nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five is covered.
I won't say how much over we have from them for that, but yes, they have been very generous in the past. This is the second donation they've made.
Fantastic.
Years, very supportive of, uh, animal, uh, pounds across the state, actually animal control operations. They've been very generous to other towns like Hopkinton. And I got, I can, DPW, uh, materials are purchased with money. Materials have gone up since COVID. You name it, you go to the store, everything's more expensive. Uh, the guys in the back of the room, along with Scott Barber, framed this addition. And have finally put it into place and now we're looking to do the finish work, starting with the electrical. But this is going to separate cats and dogs. I mean, it should be a harmonious world. Literally, the cats are going to go into the old existing pound room. The dog's going to have their very own space with ones that go outside.
Awesome.
So it's a huge improvement. Just variety is doing a great job. Just defended all the cat owners in town. Thank you, chief. Thank you so much.
Dog owners too.
Give me a for those.
Um, yes, you gave us a motion. I believe we had a second, so we'll go for a roll call vote, counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mandy.
Yes.
Machado.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Thank you so much.
Thanks, counsel.
All right, and, uh, now the guys we've been talking about for a while here, we have our DPW director and the, uh, report from him for the twenty twenty-five road evaluations. If you want to come up and share a little bit, or if you want us to talk about it, whatever. All right, thank you.
No, it's, we've been pretty fortunate since two thousand sixteen, we started just paving alone, reclaiming and paving. We've done quite a few roads in the past. But we do got to get back to even some roads that are chip sealed, that new, uh, rubberized ceiling. There's so many different options we can do that the price is way down. Take the average, like for a mile, twenty-two, a mile is, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty, yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand. And then you can get the chip ceiling, start at forty, eighty. But we got away from all, we got really away from doing that, but to catch up with some of these old roads, keep them going for a little while, we really should look into that.
Yeah.
Same as crack ceiling. Uh, what we've done in the past with, what's that, no, let go a little bit, we should be catching it up too. So I think it's something, you, you see all the roads. So I think it's something to look into.
Definitely. Um, counsel said, I'm just going to kick it off and say thank you so much for this report.
Oh.
I think, I think it's amazing. I think it's great, covered what we wanted. Um. Uh, I, I just want to touch back at the comment made in public forum that KG Ranch was not in the five-year plan. I actually just pulled it up, uh, your report now, I was waiting until we got to it. And KG Ranch is listed it on the priority list. In no particular order. So, so no road is on the five-year plan. All of them are not there, but we do have a priority list here. And, um, I guess my question for you, uh, for the benefit of the public is if somebody is reviewing this list and does not see their road. Um, what would be the best course of action for them to make sure that they can be included and that the town is notified of their roads being, uh, having an issue?
Just let somebody know and see where prioritize it, where it could go, what's worse ahead of it.
Yeah, okay, just let us know, whether he's emailing you or counsel directly and we'll forward it to you or whatever. Okay.
And, uh, the thing with, uh, that road, I think I told you before, there's more to it than that. That's going to be engineered a bit, um, how much would the, um. But that's got, uh, the watershed area, you got to take it forward, I think, so. It's going to be, yeah, that road is a mess.
Tree also, though. Uh, the tree and.
The tree right in the middle, you got.
Oh, yeah, I'm getting that out of there.
Great godson on the road.
Yeah, I'm sure you go with counselor Reynolds.
Gary, is, is there a way, I mean, I know it's a long stretch and, uh. Is there a way to do the end, the exeter end of the road? Which tends to be worse, I think, than the, you know, so going out toward Arcadia.
Yeah, Arcadia.
Is, does the, it can be done out there too? Or is it, or can, can we do that part where the engineering has to be closer?
Hey, you could do, but there's no, there's no houses all the way through there, the last house, and then that's where you're talking, thins down all the way out through the state park.
Right, but even before you get to those la- those last group of houses.
Yeah, just past Cherry Lane where it ends down.
Right.
But there's, like you said, that, that's where it ends. There's no houses, electrician that runs down the rest of the way, so.
Right, okay.
Let's say come up and do just like a overlay or something, just a.
Makes sense.
Like an inch overlay, but there's so much, there'd be so much shim in there and that.
Right.
Time to do that, you might as well.
No, I agree. I, I, if it's going to be done, it should be done not halfway, because you know, you're not going, you're not going to get back to it again, so.
And cherry, that's short. And it'd be nice to tie that in together, get them done at the same time, because there's no sense going back cutting in.
Yeah.
But there's the, the priority we got now is not too bad, because you got some longer ones, real short ones and mid-sized ones. So it's kind of good in a way, because if you got, you actually, you can do a eight hundred and fifty foot one, so, but. But there's a lot of opportunities to look, look into. And you saw that, I don't know if you see, I'll see the prices with the different applications for them. I, I, I kind of like that rubberized, that's real nice.
So that's.
It's a rubberized chip seal.
Eighty-four thousand a mile, basically, is according to this. Is that what that one is? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, twenty-two feet by five twenty-eight.
I did all just by, the main, main roads are mostly twenty-two feet wide. I did them all by a mile.
Right, so I mean, so you've got, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right one. That's eighty-four thousand a mile.
Yeah.
Basically.
Yeah.
For the rubberized chip seal.
Yes, yep, and it's got like an eight to twelve lifespan. But the chip ceiling that's come so far today, to use the chip ceiling, they use them as a small stone. Three eights or quarter, or if you do a double, they do the quarter, I mean, three eights on the bottom and a quarter on the top.
So would you, we, it, it just, I want to make sure I understand what you've got here. So you've got all the prices for the resurfacing where you've got the rubberized chip seal.
Yep.
And then the next page is roads to be resurfaced. And that would be, when you say resurface, that would be using a product like.
One of them, right.
Okay, okay, good.
And the price, and, and obviously a lot runs off the liquid asphalt price, how that ranges. So if that goes up, that goes up more. If it goes down, obviously it goes down, but that's, that's what sets the tone on it. And even coal patch, it's, it's less expensive now to get hot, uh, top coal. It's only eighty-six ton, I shouldn't say, oh, but, but coal patch. But pot holes, okay, it's, uh, one sixty, one sixty-five ton now from Richmond.
Any other counselor questions or discussion?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
All right, so on, uh, on May sixth, the original motion was to get a detailed plan to supplement the road infrastructure, um, capital improvement plan. And Gary's done a good job providing us with a lot of good information that we've never had before, never been able to look at and absorb. And so the question I think we have in front of us now is we need to get direction on how do we spend this money that we have? What do we need to target first? Um, we've got all these different options. Um, when I did the calculations, it's like four point three five million dollars to repave all the roads. Clearly, that's going to take years to do based on current revenue projections. Um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per mile to repave, as you just stated.
That's rough, and that's the drainage and, and Ironhurst is still on list. All the drainage is done there, that's the way I want. The only thing we're waiting for now, I did call, but they haven't called me back yet to set a date with when they're coming yet, so I'm working on that.
Right, so we've got X amount of dollars to spend this fiscal year on road repairs. So my expectation, and I'm hoping you can tell us, is how do we allocate that money now? What is priority? And then which of these options do we use on which roads? And some of them, we might have to make some really tough decisions where, hey, you know, we can do a single chip seal at forty thousand dollars per mile. Or we're going to have to do a double chip seal at double the cost. And really just kind of look at which, which roads that we can handle, given the budget allocation that we have. This is fantastic, but now we need to go to the next step, which is how do we attack this?
And.
I think that would be.
I think that first page.
Um, I'm thinking, what, what we should do as a, as a course of action as a council is give that direction to him to come back with us with that plan. I totally agree, this is great, and it's going to bring us to that next level where we can make a plan.
I disagree, I think we did. Develop a detailed plan to supplement the road infrastructure.
Uh, no, I mean, like back to your point, like which one do we target first? Uh, is that, did I not? Here, no, I have that as well, um.
Like.
With, with the funds that we currently have, maybe I'm.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm, that's where I end, it's all comes what I got from money to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then we can dictate, look at these different applications, do it that way. But it would be nice if we could like, pick one road that's got to get reclaimed. Pick a, a side road or two that we can get away with a chip seal and all the rubberize. And then maybe get some like buttonwoods, for instance, that's done two thousand seventeen. Seems just starting to separate. This is time to catch it, keep that water out. And we get a few cracks. Seems just starting to separate. This is time to catch it, keep that water out. Then we get a few cracks, but. It's, we got a lot in front of us right here, I, you know, the list is endless, keep going, but this is what's bad. And the the front page is, has to get reclaimed, paved. There's no saving, like Wilbur Hill. Hopefully, there's a day we can get that one out of the way, but that's. See what we come up with.
Yeah.
But anyway, if you got any questions, ask me, cuz I got, you were asking me, I think, something about the roads is other. There are priorities, but this is what's the worst.
Right.
Attack, even the roads to be resurfaced, like Shannon Hills, we're starting to lose that, Pine Hills getting real bad. They're all well-traveled roads, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially Old Mountain, that's, that's a mess.
Yeah.
And going down that, it looks like new top, that was just, excuse me, from the flood. That's just a little overlay, and that's all cracking now too.
So awesome. So do we have any further council questions?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Mark.
So I know the, in the state budget, the general assembly is basically like permanent, the road, I forget what they call it. Well, so how does that work? Obviously, we have to match, but what do they, what do they pay? What do we pay?
It was what, one-third uh them, two-thirds us?
Yeah.
Only one-third, and we're only on for Pinehurst, and then they cut it off, that's it. They're not doing it anymore.
Well, the, I saw today, the governor was going to someplace to. Because it's permanently, they're making, I'll tell you. Making it permanent. Yeah, Governor McKee highlights six point five million for local road and bridge improvements through Road Restore.
Publish.
No, cities and towns, to help local communities complete much-needed road, I'm just reading off this news article. Event marked the successful passage of the governor's budget proposal to make Road Restore a permanent program. Securing long-term, long-term support for local road and bridge improvements across all thirty-nine cities and towns.
Right, but are they improving their roads across these towns? I think, I think that's the question.
How it works, cities and towns contribute sixty-seven percent of the funds, and the state funds the remaining thirty-three percent as a project match. With the new six point five million in funding highlighting today, the first twenty-five percent will be distributed equally with each municipality eligible for approximately forty-one thousand six hundred dollars. The remaining four point one million will be distributed proportionally based upon each municipality's share of non-federally eligible lane miles.
So that.
Application process, the application process for the next round of funding will open next week with RIDOT rapidly approving projects on a rolling basis.
Awesome, so that aligns with what they did last time, the same criteria, opening next week. Thank you, Mark. Sorry about that. I completely were done. Thanks, Dan, for pulling that up.
Man, I got a little more thing to say.
Yeah, sure.
On the resurfing application, they got that micro surfing, surfacing. That's, it's a cold slurry mix, does that, but it's got some, some kind of cement aggregates mixed with it. And when that life runs out, you wanna go, but any of these are applications, you couldn't put over it, cuz the bonding won't go to that, so you'd have to grind that up before you put something down again. That's the only thing wrong with the micro surf.
Is that true of the rubberized?
No.
Chip, okay. Just because it's got cement, it won't bond.
But it's if you want, if you wanna go over that, with that, you couldn't do it, you'd have to grind it first.
Good to know.
Just excited that we kept that money, um because if we did not keep that money in the capital improvement plan, then we would have not had the match to provide the state, and we would have missed out on on their one-third match. And I just think that that needs to be highlighted and appreciated, um because. I don't know, last time we did roads, that gave us a good chunk. I I think, I heard we did pretty well because of the mileage that we have in Richmond. And then, you know, they split it fairly and then go across with how many mileage, how many miles we have. Um just wanna highlight the, that we kept it in the budget for a reason, and this is that reason. So yeah, any other council questions or comments on the report? Kinda just bring us back to full circle to that, and then we'll go to our next item.
Well, I think we need to discuss what we just mentioned. Is it, I mean, now we need to, we got this report, what are we gonna do with it? We gotta act, right?
Yep.
So do we need another motion to ask the DPW to provide us with guidance on how to spend five hundred thousand dollars?
That's what I had said, and then you told me you disagreed with me.
I didn't. It's like, we're not gonna get out of here without having another motion, so I think we should just do it. So I'm gonna make a motion to request that the DPW um provide the town council with a plan and options on how to um repair our roads, given the allocated budget that we have in the capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-six.
I would love to second that motion.
That's something we can go with two, four together and look, reason on why and why. Like this, maybe you want, you guys see something else that might be a little better, so, but it's, it's all there, so, figure it out.
Awesome, so we have our motion, we have our second. Any further council discussion on the motion?
I just wanna.
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
Gary just mentioned this, have, kind of was intimidating that we should have a workshop. I don't know how, I mean, that would be difficult, because, let's be honest here, there's, and you said, there are a lot of roads in Richmond that need work. And we've had people come to us public forum multiple times to say, hey, I want my road worked on. If we have a workshop, and I think that's probably a good thing to do, and it can be transparent, there are gonna be people, and I understand they're gonna be upset that their roads aren't gonna be repaired. Maybe not this year, next year, or in three years. Um you know, we're in a really tough spot, but we gotta start somewhere. I think we have the opportunity to start somewhere. So I guess the question for the council is, we can have DPW provide us with their guidance, based on their knowledge and expertise. We can have a workshop at DPW as a town and discuss all of this and try to come up with a plan. That might be two owners, too big to handle, but just wanna throw it out there.
I think that if we get your recommendations, when we as a council come together to discuss it, this is an open public meeting, and if anybody wants to come and make comments, that they could. I don't know if a workshop is um, I mean, it might be beneficial. But also, like, it's the same thing, we can still get public comment uh without a workshop, so I can honestly go either way. I see counselor Pumashana wants to that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that um it's, it's not, it's not uh necessarily a transparency issue, because um I think what would work well is, because there are two council members that have taken point on this, that's not a quorum, I would suggest they meet with DPW. Come up with a recommendation, come back to council, share that plan, and it is public and open for everyone to hear what the resolution is. That's uh, you know, avoiding the complexity which could slow down the process.
We, we got enough to work with, Jim. It's between two pages right there, it's, it's.
And I fully.
We can stop.
Trust what you would recommend, and counselor Madnick and and council president uh Wilcox, working with you and that. I think they would, you all would come back with some great recommendations.
All right.
I'll be down for that, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be open to it as well.
Yeah, you're okay with that.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to amend the motion to include that workshop strategy, do we? Okay, um, yeah, I gotta, I'll be sure, go ahead, Mark.
I I just wanted to make sure that as part of this process, we get a project on the into the state.
Like free money at this point.
Yeah, I'm so excited that, so excited that's back. Like Danielle, I thought it was, I thought it was gone. Um, all right, so, do we vote? All right, we'll go to our roll call, counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Manic.
Yes.
Poshano.
Yes.
Edels.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Gary. We'll be speaking soon. Onto our next item of business, we're on to our new business. Uh we have requests of counselor Madnick for discussion and consideration to install a permanent sign at the Richmond transfer station. I'm not gonna read it all. Go ahead, counselor Madnick.
Sure, so this came up, oh, and back in May, so I I use the transfer station, I don't pay for someone to haul my trash or recycling away. I generally go once every two months with trash from my house, and I happened to be there. I didn't have my phone on me, but I went back later. We've had issues um recently with uh fines for having non-recyclables in our our cycling nets brought up to around resource recovery, the landfill. And if you extrapolate that out through the year, we're up with like six thousand dollar fines. And of course, we spent hours and hours in many discussions about the budget, and, you know, we negotiate over a couple thousand dollars, but here we are. Basically shooting ourselves in the foot, costing ourselves six grand every year potentially. Um this is something that Jim has brought up previously. But we were just having this discussion, I go to the transfer station, and there's, there is a hose reel with a hose in it, which is not recyclable. Sitting right there, and I go, I chat with Vinnie, I say, hey, Vinnie, you know, there's, there's that, there's some other junk in the, and he's like, I don't have time, I can't go grab it. We're just gonna have to, I'll just crush it down and hopefully it passes, like, okay. Well, when you do go to the transfer station, you go to the recycling area, there are some signs, and I don't know if um Eric can bring it up. Basically, it's a little tiny sign, this is mixed recycling, here's what can go in, says no plastic bags, no shredded paper. Oh, Jim has it.
Printout, yeah.
And I, I just think it would be helpful if we were able to put up some larger signs to say what is and is not allowed to go in there, just to remind people, uh because it is costing us money. Um I know that we do have caution residents using our transfer station blaming one town or the other, but sometimes you know, some, some more conspicuous reminders help people. Um I think Vinnie does a pretty good job, sometimes he places it, you know, he comes up there, but I mean, one of the things that I think people don't realize too is like um like garden containers, pots from plants, tho- those aren't recycled.
Yeah.
They are now.
Yeah, well, the um, I know that because of Rhode Island Resource Recovery, um that I have a person who would follow them on Instagram, and they recently posted that the the pots are, but those little containers where you get like six or seven are not. So some are and some aren't, and I I didn't know that either, and I was actually talking to some DPW direct uh employees, and they were, told me it wasn't. And I I learned very recently that it was. Sorry.
There we go.
You could always learn more about recycling.
So that, I think that's another thing is, I have seen that around resource recovery, they do change what is allowed and not allowed. I wouldn't say annually, but every once in a while, you see something come through that, hey, we can't take this or that anymore, we need to change it. So I just wanna bring that up for discussion. Obviously, there's gonna be a cost to putting signs in. I don't really know what signs to put up there. But I just figured we should bring it to the attention of the council and consider doing it, and.
Oh.
Hopefully, Jessica's some expertise she can share with us.
I I heard a rumor it's a good idea, so I'm gonna go for you, counselor Dinsmore.
Yeah, no, I just um, I asked my boss today about the signs, and he said that uh Johnson gives them. These are big signs that show, you know, paper, um bottles, and show what goes in there, what doesn't go in there, obviously. And we came up with our, we have our own signs that are like, you know, eight by eight, so you can't miss it, you know what I mean? And I went, I went my, myself uh the other day, the first time Saturday, over there too, and I did notice the um lack of signage. I think that um, and where are we, you can't have enough signage. I think, because, you know, people always go back to, well, I didn't see this, I didn't see that, but you, um, big signs, a lot of signs. Is the, is the ticket, and I I I took pictures of four or five of them, um, to share with people if they wanna look. Um, and again, like, I think that uh if we all, or if someone's up in Johnston, that I think they're more and more than willing to, you know, uh give signs out and give information, more information, so.
That's great.
Anybody else got anything to add? All right, um, sure.
No, it's just, um, I think just, just a point of clarification, and I'm gonna ask uh Gary and Cody to, to correct me on this. Um when an individual comes to the transfer station to put recycling in, that's where they're looking at the sign, and where we may or may not have a non-compliance. But when the uh heavy haulers come in, and they may have mixed loads, that goes to the landfill, or that gets dumped, but that could also have uh non-compliance too. So at least we could address the residents putting it in, but we can't do anything about the heavy haulers, right? Okay.
I think it's a great idea, I think it's a a great initiative. I think the picture that was shown looks like the Johnston's um, like layout is what they typically do, looks like a lot of the material I've seen, so that might be one of their signs that you're talking about, Jeff. Um, I think that by the time somebody gets to the transfer station, though, it's a little too little too late, like you'll see the sign, you'll know what's going on. But you're not gonna necessarily go through at that point and pick your things out, and if you do, that's great, but I don't think the majority of people would do that. I think it would be good to have something for them to take home. Um I know that they get something when they get a sticker, when they get the tag, you get materials, and materials are available elsewhere. Um, but but I do support the signs, I just think something like adding a little more to it would be good, a little extra sprinkles. Um, and also, the point about how much it costs the town, or that it is a cost to the town would be beneficial as well, because it can tell people recycle, 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 and they'll say, why, why, why? Um, and just showing them that there is a cost to them as taxpayers might help um encourage them to do the work. That's, those are my thoughts. Um also, my, my only question, I guess, would be, is there any pricing that has been pulled out for these signs or or estimated or anything? No?
I didn't know Johnson had any until just now.
Yeah, I I'm in the impression that they're free.
Oh, they're free, awesome.
So.
Hopefully.
He would have told me, cuz it's tight.
Good.
Yeah.
Sure.
Just a question, Aaron, I can't remember um, from a dump sticker perspective, I know it's Richmond and also Hopkin Town. Uh what's this split? Is it like seventy-thirty? Is it uh, do you know, hand?
Um, I would say now it's probably close to sixty-five Richmond.
Sixty-five, so, thank you. There's a, they, I mean, you know, from, I like the idea of a communication out, depending how it goes out. But it wouldn't be just Richmond uh residents who would need to get that, so, cuz there's.
We do give them. So Hopkin Town gets provided the transfer sticker placards through us for the ones that are given out at town hall, so Hopkin Town residents can come here, or they can go to Hopkin Town. And when that first started, um we were completely inundated with Hopkin Town residents, and it was um changed very quickly to have them go to Hopkin Town, so we could still serve our residents, our other services. So they get the same um printout, the fees, and all of that information, and they have to give that to their residents as well. So, just for some clarity, and then they report back to us, Hopkin Town, so now we can track how many are Richmond and how many are Hopkin Town.
Thank you.
Awesome. Did we have a motion? I don't think we did. Is there any kind of action or motion anywhere for help?
Trying to think of what motion we would put out.
Signs are free, get one of the free.
We don't know, Sam. I think we need more information.
So I think, wait, let me try to think of something. So I think the motion would be to um request our DPW director to inquire with Rhode Island Resource Recovery about recycling signs that we can install at the transfer station. And if they are at no cost, retrieve as many as he sees necessary. Load the place up, Gary.
Second?
But what if they are, do have a class? If it's less than he bidding them out, I just could go for it?
Mark's losing his mind that we're having a discussion for twenty minutes on sides.
There you go, there you go. Let the DPW run their transfer station, they can do it, they can figure it out. They.
Do you wanna amend the motion?
No.
All right, so we have that direction. Um any further council discussion on it?
DPW's got a budget, there's some costs, I mean.
They have any questions, they know to come back to us.
Yeah.
I actually had a few more questions on this.
Um. Go for our roll call vote, counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Uh Manic.
Yes.
Poshano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
No.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, on to um new business, discussion and consideration of contract amendments with PVD trucks. Um, we have a request to eliminate the five B requirement, uh means paragraph five B, I assume, for the two DDPW staff. And a request of PVD Foods to eliminate the two fifty fee if they're providing parking attendants. Who's taking the lead on this one for us to hear from to learn more? Is that you? I, I saw your hand first, Attorney Zankari, and uh this is contract related, so if you'd like to go first, go for it.
Sure, it it's my information that we received, that uh the DPW uh wasn't gonna have the personnel power to to keep on doing these events uh the way it was written in the contract. And we told PVD Food uh about that, which they said, well, we'll supply that personnel power if you reduce the two hundred and fifty dollar fee we're paying for those two people. Uh so that's the reason for that, and they said they would set up uh the cones and and do those items. So that's the reason for the amendment. So I think it, I think, as my, as I understand it, it was kinda driven by the town and the town's ability to perform, and then based on that I'm gonna call it lack of ability to perform to the contract, PVD has asked for the concession form of the monetary payment.
All right.
Did I get that pretty much right?
Sounds good. I saw counselor Pumashana looking for attention. Go ahead.
Yeah, so just a question.
Yeah.
And the contract, how much is PVD paying for those DPW workers as the contract today?
It was two fifty.
So just for some clarity, so PVD is not paying for DPW personnel, the town, for they. DPW personnel, the town for they actually don't get paid at all. They get a um day off following if they work it. But the two hundred and fifty dollar is the the fee of use of the land when we only have two police details and not three police.
So just for clarity, we're not able to support the DPW from a staffing perspective now. So we're asking, instead of having them there, we're gonna collect the garbage and the cones the next day. And no?
I don't think so.
No. PVD is gonna provide the personnel and they're gonna have to pay, they're gonna have to pay them, so they're asking us to.
So PVD is gonna remove the garbage?
Yes.
So I think.
Oh, well, they're gonna provide this, they're gonna provide the two staff people. I don't know that they're gonna remove garbage, but.
So I think the agreement, what was discussed is that public works would drop off the cones before they leave and the cans.
Great.
Yep, and then the following day would remove the garbage and the cones.
So will do that work, yeah. So we're still.
Prior to their, during their regular shift, not after. So the PVD provider would have to shut down the parking lot at four o'clock, which typically DPW would have someone on staff, so when Town Hall business closed, they would shut down the cones. But I believe DPW will provide the cones and the trashcans. But PVD will do all the required work, but DPW will pick up the trash and cones the following day.
So essentially, they're still doing the same work, they're just doing it on a different day.
Well, DPW is won't be here to help our record, park cars.
They're not gonna attend the event.
Right.
Okay, so that's where the hiring, there's other people that need to be hired to do that?
PVD would have to bring addition.
And how is that? So DPW today, our DPW people are parking cars at PVD food truck event for free?
Yes.
Today?
Yeah.
No, in exchange for the the fee that we discussed during the initial contract.
No.
I think. What was the fee for then? Right, 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 but like it encompasses other amenities to it because we didn't have the plan yet, which I know we're talking about later.
Okay.
Um I get it.
The DPW parks the cars?
No, they don't park the cars. They just. Yeah, it's there's no, there's no valet at our food truck night.
This season?
There's.
I thought it was August was the last.
Yeah, I think.
Other than August, but then they rained out this past week.
Oh, they did.
I don't think they're gonna.
They're not gonna utilize their July rain date is what I was told.
Okay, so it's only one more event.
Well.
Go ahead, Mark.
Well, I think they could use it. I think they've reserved some dates in September, which they could ask.
They would have to reapply for the license.
Whatever, but I.
So what kind of action would council like to take on this?
Um I make a motion to approve the contract amendments as proposed, eliminating the requirement for two DPW staff and eliminating the two hundred and dollar fifty, two hundred and fifty dollar fee that PVD uh has to pay for the remaining events.
I will second the motion for a discussion. We have discussion. I saw Dan's hand. Go ahead, Councilor Matt Nick.
It's the only thing I get accomplished on on this council. We're never going through this again. Absolute disaster for PVD, for Richmond. It's embarrassing every step of the way. Let's just get this over with.
Agreed. Any other council discussion? Alright, we'll go for a roll call vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Matt Nick.
Yes.
Pomashano.
No.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. On to our next new business update from a request from Council Pomashano for GZA to provide an update on for Richmond Townhouse Road. Go ahead, counselor.
Sure, um I just, I I requested it and I think GZA is probably on and they've answered the questions, but because the number four Richmond Townhouse Road property, there has been some uh momentum behind it. I know uh 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 Chair Wilcox has been involved as well. And just want an opportunity for the public to hear what where we are today, what the plan is and um what the next steps are. I know we'll hear a lot from GZA about the um environmental review and the planners here as well, the planners been involved, um Holly Gillette. Um I know when we originally had conversations around the environmental review with HUD, that um it was estimated that possibly this could come to fruition in the fall. It doesn't seem like that's gonna happen now, so I wanted to have a very transparent and open conversation about where we are and hear from them. The other thing is, as we know, we have a grant funding for this, but every day that goes by, materials costs go up and it limits what our options are. So I think the public deserves to hear where we're at, so that's why it's on the agenda.
So is uh Representative from GZA available?
They were on the agenda. They were on Zoom.
They were on Zoom?
They they were? They're no longer here?
They're no longer in Zoom unless they change their name to Mr. Jonathan Melencamp. I did just.
Unless he changes his name to Mr. Jonathan Melencamp, then we don't, we don't think so.
Well, we're not, we're not building little pink houses.
Oh, we'll take a break uh after we see you through. I'm sorry.
I did email um GZA representatives who was said that was gonna be here and as well as the project manager. Just advised that we are on their item.
Motion to take a five minute recess?
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor to take a recess. I guess we'll see if we can get in touch with him and then come back and we'll get our break. We'll go for our roll call vote, Councilor Dinsmore. Matt Nick?
Yes.
Pomashano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
You can speak up sooner for your breaks.
We, uh, we're gonna come back to order, just so the audience knows. Have a motion to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene.
Okay.
Alright, I'll go for our roll call vote, Councilor Ginsmore.
Yes.
Matt Nick?
Yes.
How much time?
This is.
Discussion reconvene?
No, yes, sorry.
Oh, yes, the yes.
I'm sorry, yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. So, we're back on the GZI, I have heard we have not been able to locate him, so he is not here today. So, would you like your discussion, Councilor Conchon?
Yeah, thank you so much. And it, you know, I'm, I'm gonna assume it's because it's a lengthy meeting and something happened, so we'll assume that that is what it is, but, uh, I imagine the clerk is gonna be sending an email that the council expected some kind of update. I don't know what our options are for, um, getting, uh, because we don't have a council meeting until when now?
August nineteenth.
August nineteenth, so the public won't hear until August nineteenth, what's happening. Perhaps we could get some kind of detailed communication that we could post on the website. Or some kind of communication.
They did answer?
Yeah, they did, I saw the answers, but I, but you know, when we talk about it, the, there, there was a gap between that environmental review, like, and when we talked, it was environmental review is in process and that was supposed to happen. Now, we're still two weeks out from that environmental review being completely with HUD, so if, the timeline is just a little bit erratic.
It is, and I'd like to comment on the update we received today, um, with these materials, because that update is the exact same update that was provided last month. Last month, we were informed that all community notifications were sent, um, it was on June seventeenth, our meeting, but a notice to, was not sent to the Rhode Island Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission until six twenty-six. So after our meeting happened, I, um, took the message within our materials, and I listened to Karen Pinch, uh, give the update at our last meeting, and it was mostly word for word. So, I, um, while I appreciate updates, I also appreciate, um, any meeting that can be an email. I also appreciate that if we can avoid meetings when we can, but as long as we're getting like substantive, real updates within those, you know, emails in lieu of a meeting, um, I think that's really important. So I'm sorry if I sound frustrated and upset, but it, it was a little frustrating when I listened back to Karen reading what we received this evening. So I think we need to have them here at the next meeting, we need to have a substantial update. So it's available to the public, because I think, I, I have nothing more to add to what Jim said about the process.
Oh, Madam Chair, just a question for you, would you support, um, us scheduling a meeting with you, myself, and GZI and town staff here in the coming weeks to, uh, get that updated in person?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
Um, because just as a reminder to the public, that's one of the tasks that Jim and I were assigned to during our, our council goals, to, you know, avoid forms, so.
So, uh, could we, well, I don't think we need a motion to do that, I think we can take that offline and work with the staff, but we will be doing that in the coming weeks then.
Sure.
Cool.
Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
And anyone here can answer this. I'm not involved, you guys are handling it, it's your goals. Is GZI performing to what they are being contracted to do? Because I see a lot of frustration from staff, I see a lot of frustration coming from both of you about how this is, um, how this is going, and it just seems like they are not performing, or there's a lack of communication from them to the town on the steps here, and it doesn't seem like it is moving forward at the pace that everyone expected. Is that an appropriate assertion here?
I'm not gonna.
Misunderstanding something?
I'm not gonna speak for Jim, but I don't think the full frustration is on GZI, part of it is on HUD too, we're waiting for them, um, so.
I think we're gonna find out.
Yeah.
We're gonna find out, we have to have a conversation with them and ask those questions.
Okay. Cause it would be, I, I mean, it really be a shame if we lose the ability to spend the grant money because the federal government holds us back.
Yep, we'll find out.
Okay.
Any further comment on this item? Alright, um, on to the next item, number four, request of Councilor Manick and President Wilcox for discussion consideration of creating and amending a policy for use of town property. I'll shift it over to you, Dan, to start us off.
Sure, okay, so this is one of those problems that came up, I think, um, earlier on this year, um, we just kind of dealt with a, a piece of it, with the PBD food truck situation. You know, instead of like a lot of hand wringing and complaining, that's, you know, I, I've been doing a lot about that. I spent a lot of time on this, and I apologize to everyone, but not really, kind of, ninety pages of different policies from different towns, all over, um, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Aaron even sent me one from North Carolina, which is actually really good, it was, it was a good one. Jamestown, North Carolina, there's probably a mistake there, but hey, it was a good one, so it doesn't matter. So, really, I think it's time for this town to address an issue that's kind of been longstanding, is how do we appropriately use our public property and allow people that want to use it to use it, and have it be a fair and clear process? We went through this with PVD food trucks, it was not a fun experience. We have someone kind of renting the dog park space for training, that was ad hoc. I think it's time, given that we're hopefully going to have four Richmond Townhouse Road, um, built up, that we draft a policy and a policy in writing with an application and permitting. And we, and as Ms. Wilcox and I were working on, this is one of the things that we were working on together, she suggested, why don't we put this into an ordinance? And I felt that that was, uh, definitely a good idea, so what we've done is we've gone through these documents along with town staff, and we've summarized the various public properties that we have that could be utilized by private entities, or even our own boards and commissions. We have the current regulations and policies that are summarized that we currently have on the books. And then, there's a little bit of background of what's been done in the past on the town, and then provided example policies and regulations from around the area, including the one in North Carolina. And then we came up with some recommendations that we wanted to provide the council on where you think we should go drafting this policy, and the application or permitting process. If we have some consensus on where we want to move forward, then we can ask our staff to put something together and utilize the examples that we have from other communities. This is basically work smarter, not harder. Sam and I did the work, we summarized everything for everyone, we felt that this would be a good way of reducing staff time and helping move the process forward. I'd like to have this in place, especially before, um, next year, when we start getting licenses for, you know, potential outdoor events and before Richmond Townhouse Road, uh, for Richmond Townhouse Road is built out. So I'd like everyone's feedback, what you guys are thinking about this, and talk to everyone about what their thoughts are.
Awesome, thank you, I'll throw up to council discussion for your thoughts. I know it's a lot of information, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I think it was, uh, great, a lot of information to work off of, um, I think what I would, um, you know, what could be helpful is, uh, we have a new person who, as far as a new structure, will have the community serviced recreation director person who will be, uh, at the forefront of managing these properties. Perhaps it's an opportunity for that person to, you know, documentation and to formulate, uh, some kind of plan that we could then review, um, and put into, uh, you know, codify it.
Any other council questions or discussion?
That was gonna be my suggestion. Excuse me.
We are.
That, you know, we've got ninety-two pages of stuff, and we give that to the staff and say, come back with, knowing, you know, because this is not Charlestown, this is not Jamestown, we don't have beaches to rent, we don't have five-hundred-person pavilions to rent, uh, we don't have Ninnegrit Park to rent, so, you know, knowing what we have, come back to us with a, a proposed policy, or, I mean, I, I don't know what you want a consensus on, um, you know.
I guess, did you have any suggestions of what you would want to see in a policy?
Yeah.
You feel like we just put the information together and we did the research, here we go, and now, let's get some direction from the elected officials and staff on how we want to handle this.
Yeah, I definitely think that, um, you know, it's ninety-two pages long, but there's only, um, like, really one or two pages of recommendations.
Yeah.
So there's really more feedback on those recommendations that we could then give staff a little bit more of a direction to, that we wanted to go, because if we just came up here and said, please draft an ordinance, they'd say, alright, what do you want it to say? So, there, take the page one or two, the one or two pages of recommendations to say, uh, I mean, to then create what they want, and a lot of it, I mean, I know it's one or two pages, um, but a lot of it is like, you know, dates requested, time requested, use purpose, like, for the form. So, uh, um, that part is kind of just standard, but then there are some things that we really should know what the council would want to do, like, do we rent a dumpster? I don't think so. But, um, you know, some things I disagree with, but, you know, the questions there are really what we wanted to get a direction on, but if council didn't have any feedback or questions on that, then we could just have our motion be to have staff draft something. And I don't want to wait for the new person to come into their seat, because that's gonna take a little time to post the job and advertise it and everything, so I think that is something that we could ask our listener to do for us. And, and we'd appreciate their, like, the, any staff members' feedback.
And I get ninety-one pages is a lot, but it's a matter of transparency, okay, public, so we're gonna be coming up with this policy, and here's everything that'll look at to come up with something. And so they can look at it and they can make their own determinations, because we do, you know, allow public input, we should have public input, so I know it's long, it's the same thing we did when we talked about motor vehicle rating. Here's all the stuff that's out there, here's what I found. I'm not saying we should do one thing or the other, this is, this is what is out there, what do you guys think? I'm not hard pressed on anything, I'm not the only person that lives in Richmond, there's eight thousand people here.
Well, I, I think you've got to determine, there are some facilities that you may want to charge a fee for, there are some that maybe you don't want to charge it. And, um, you know, you know, what is, but again, to me, it's, it's very granular, you know, what's the application gonna look like? What's the, you know, blocks of time you're gonna allow? At what, at what point do you require insurance, or don't require insurance?
Who comes up with that?
I think the staff can come up with that. Based upon what they've seen, that you've put together.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, maybe I'm putting too much, I mean, I, I just think.
I mean, there are some, there are some cities and towns where it comes down to the mayor, the mayor makes the decision. Like that elected official, it's kind of interesting.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the, the first page that identifies the properties, you know, so it lists Richmond Elementary School, Beaver River Playground, um, the former landfill on Budwell Woods, Town Hall, Richmond Fort Townhouse Road, Police Station slash Senior Center, Heritage Trail Dog Park, um, and then there's some others. So, maybe just, when we think about the, the first, first and foremost identifying which of those properties we might want to apply some kind of structure to, because maybe not all of them. And then, there are outdoor, they're mostly outdoor, I really, I don't know, as far as Richmond Elementary School, I've never heard of it, like, anyone coming to us to rent, because they would have to go through the, the school, even though we own it, they'd have to go through the school department, so we probably could kind of put that one off to the side for now, but focusing on the playground, right, focusing on, um, when we say the Town Hall and the number four, I mean, it's almost together, because when we have events, they kind of overlap, so that might, might be the two together. And then something for the, um, when we talk about the old dog park, I don't think, I know there's some, is it still a class there, but we really aren't pushing people of that, we're really trying to get people to utilize the new property, right?
Um, that was a specialized situation where she was a dog trainer and needed the space.
Okay.
That location is actually like a FEMA storage site for debris.
Yeah, so, you know.
Yeah.
But, so we focused on, uh, so that's three.
But it is something that has happened in the past, because why, it's something that should be, um, on our minds.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think as far as, um, simplest to start the process, to have staff focus on the Town Hall complex, Beaver River, and, well, the new dog park, and maybe the senior center. Um, and I'd love to hear any reflections from the staff on that.
Sure, go ahead, Attorney Zangari.
I think, I think what I'd like to do, uh, with your permission, is create a draft based on the information that was provided this evening, and talk with the interim town administrator about some of the details, some of the blocking and tackling that Counselor Reynolds identified, I think we can do that, and give you a good start to work from, and then you can add or sub, and add or delete things as you feel necessary, and, uh, we can take the next step, I, I think we can get you a good draft.
Perfect.
That really starts you in a, a direction that hopefully you feel comfortable with.
Good, good.
Fair?
Yeah. Um, but we don't have a motion, right?
No.
Okay, thank you. I don't, you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Aaron wants.
I just, I'd say draft ordinance versus policy, because the ordinance, I think, would be much.
Uh, yeah, I said draft ordinance, I think, yeah, if that's okay with, uh, with the council.
Yeah, I had proposed that, just because, um, we have policies, but those policies aren't necessarily available, um, all the time, and that's something that I've pulled and looked at to see what, what policy should we be making more public, more easily accessible, so that way people are just aware it happens, because when you're looking for a town rule, I don't know, maybe I'm too in the field, but the first thing I go to is the ordinances, but, uh, I don't know.
What provides more flexibility to those making the decision on use, varying requirements if necessary? I think flexibility is key, because you cannot foresee the details of every event that someone might have, and there has to be flexibility to tailor the requirements to a particular event, so if a policy, and I, maybe there's no difference, but I would think a policy would be a little more, have a little more flexibility to it than an ordinance that maybe staff might not be able to deviate from.
That's, that's true, I think you're, I think you're right, it, it does give you more flexibility, but it also doesn't give you, the flip side, it doesn't give you much enforceability either. So what you could do is, in that ordinance, you could make a, of course, with any ordinance, any applicant could come before the town council, I have extenuating circumstances, this doesn't really fit the mold. I'm gonna have an event that doesn't, that needs special consideration, they could always come before you, you could even put that in the ordinance.
We could, and, um, a lot of the questions and considerations, days, times, available, could be on the form itself, which could then be easily amended, similar, I don't know, the outdoor entertainment, you know, um, you know, you have the ordinance for it, but then we have a form, which we could then ask for other information as needed.
Right, but for enforceability, each reservation, if you will, is gonna be detailed, dates, times, requirements, that the person is going to agree to, which would then be enforceable if, you know, I, you know, enforceable, it becomes contractual, I think.
Right.
A little different than an ordinance enforcement, I think, in my mind. I mean, we, we can, we can talk about that.
Yeah.
We, we can talk, we can talk about it.
Sure, go ahead, Jim.
Just a question, I mean, I think, Mark, what you're trying to avoid is that we had, we kind of back ourselves into a corner, and that suggestion would give council the opportunity to kind of, uh, create exceptions, but, um, it to, to allow that flexibility, would it be possible to write in that, that the community director slash human services has the, has the ability to modify that ordinance, I mean, is that, can you write that into, to an ordinance that they have the ability to, to modify it, or is that not something that?
I, I, no, I would, I wouldn't suggest you.
Usually the department has to come to us.
Department had to modify it.
Yeah, I'm only asking, because.
I think only you can do that.
Maybe that's part of the staff.
Only you can do that, alright.
That, and that's part of the problem, is the timeliness of, you know, someone wants to do an event next month, oh, and it's some line of deviation, oh, we don't have a council meeting, we gotta call a special meeting.
But Charlestown does, though, they put some of these.
But they have a rec, they have, I, I think, I could be wrong, their Recreation Commission, I think, approves their, um, use, it's not a town council.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I just think flexibility is important, you know, the, the reality, and I could be wrong, unless it's so, unless there's some major deviation, no one's gonna be checking up on these people to make sure that they, you know.
Right.
Have the exact number of people, or that they clean up afterwards, until, unless it's the next day and there's garbage everywhere, it's like, well, you know.
We, we could certainly put in something in, in, in an ordinance if you'd like, uh, that would give the Recreation Director authority to approve the activity.
Yeah, that, that in my mind was the purpose of this, was the town council creates the ordinance outlining what we need to, what, to empower our employee to make the decision. Um, and we, I want to make sure, like, Mark had said, that the flexibility is there, so they can do what they need to do. And, and mostly it's just so we're not making it up on the fly every time, you know, we have somebody who wants to rent the, the dog, the old, the landfill, we're just gonna call it the landfill, if somebody wants to rent a landfill to train dogs on, and we're just like, well, what do we do, what do we do, I don't know, I guess we have to go to council, because staff's not empowered to make that decision, and the same thing with the food truck night, it's like, okay, we don't have a rule around this, so what are we gonna do? What do we, okay, let's bring it to council, we have to have an open discussion, that's lengthy and long, so this is made to empower our staff to, to take this off our plates, so we don't have to come to as many pow, public meetings as we can, and I know the, there's a lot of recommendations here, but I'm not expecting the date and time requested to be in the ordinance or anything like that. Public property is open from dusk till dawn, and boom, that's it. So, um, yeah, I don't know, I, I appreciate that feedback, and I hope that it's in our, our draft ordinance, that it's empowering and flexible. Uh, sure, go ahead, Aaron.
So I think there's gonna be a clear difference for authority and approval of public events versus private events, so I think that the Community Recreation Director for private parties, like when the pavilions build, birthday parties or whatever, and it's only for those invited guests, but I don't think that, like, there could be, for a public event such as, such as PVD food trucks, we need a policy on how we utilize the land. However, because of state law and local ordinances, um, for licensing, they have to come before council regardless, and so that flexibility on events isn't allowed, depending on what activity they're doing, so I think there could be a clear difference between a public event where we're saying, hey, Richmond, everybody's invited to this, versus a private event where we're having a boy scout group or a birthday party, and that's by invitation only. So I think you could write it in ordinance form, that if this is required, town council has the authority to approve those licenses anyway.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to have, uh, an, an application to approve for use of public property, but the same time, we have to approve a license, so like, that can be separate, so you let the staff member approve the application pending the approval of the license from the town council. As to what Mark and Sam said, we don't want the council to be inundated with all these applications for use of public property. We want to let the staff handle that in the big thought that we have to adhere to for the state, like the licensing. That is what the council needs to handle.
Right, and so, and the timing, and I think timing is important for that, because most of those provisions done on public property, a concert, a, any kind of entertainment requires a public hearing and a two-week notice. That's why those applications are due in advance, so, because sometimes while we want to be completely flexible, we can't, because it won't meet the public notice requirement, so I think for, there should be kind of a definition of that timing somewhere for transparency.
The full chart, if this, then you gotta do this, if not, well, there you go, you're on to the pound.
Yeah, that's more like a, on our website explanation, but, yeah, no, I, I think that can be included.
Cause that's what, kind of, I think, some of these exchanges.
Yeah.
Have, you know, hampered, because there's other requirements, and a town use is, does the town want to allow this activity, needs to be clearly defined in the policy, and then, should that activity require a license component, to make sure that those timings fall? We try and align that as close as possible, but, and then, again, like, the language, should it not be defined in the ordinance, they could go to the council to ask for a, you know, then, I don't know. But I think we have the majority based on what other examples are used.
Yeah. Alright, so with that lengthy discussion and good, good feedback from everybody, um, do we have any other council discussion? Did, Councilor Manick, you did put a motion on the floor to, Director, we didn't get there yet, yeah, that was what you said.
Yes, you did.
That was a definitely bad motion, okay, um, I knew somebody had done it, so.
That counts, right?
So, so moved the count, oh. Geez, so, we have our motion, we have our second, any further council discussion?
Yeah, just want clarification, so Attorney Zangari is going to draft an ordinance. Did that also include drafting the application as well, for?
I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that, no, just, I was just thinking the ordinance.
Do you feel like that's something within your purview or the staff's purview?
I think it'd take the.
Do you have the staff do it?
Yeah.
I think once you have an ordinance in place, you then take that words and say, okay, here's the application that fits.
Okay.
The ordinance.
Perfect.
We still have the information we need to put on the application, so you can't, can't have an application until you know what's gonna go on.
What would we do if you weren't here, this is fantastic.
You'd be.
Get out of here right now.
So, didn't I?
Alright, um, we'll go for our roll call vote.
Yes.
Councilor Ginsmore.
Yes.
Manick.
Yes.
Conchon.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes, alright, um. What do we got, number five? Alright, another request from Councilor Manick, this is for a discussion consideration to direct the finance board, uh, to meet and provide a report on how better to create review and present the annual budget. Take it away, Dan.
Okay, so, this was brought to my attention by Mr. Noble, who is sitting in the audience. In fact, it was brought to the attention of the entire council, um, when he was providing us with. In fact, it was brought to attention the entire council when he was providing us with his the reasons why he wanted to be on the finance board. And I reached out to him and after this previous budget referendum and asked him if he was still willing to do you know, take on some time and work with Danielle to do this. And he said, and he suggested, well, why don't we have a whole finance board involved? And I'll I'll admit that I didn't run this by Danielle first, and I should have. So I apologize for that, Danielle. I know it kind of blindsided you. I did talk to Ms. Rieger. I didn't talk to the other board members, but both of them thought it was a good idea. So I figured we put it on me and John and discuss it. I know this is something that Danielle talked about a little bit during the budget process, but even for me as a new council and someone who has seen this stuff before, it it was definitely difficult to understand some of the the budgeting and the finance stuff that, you know, was presented to us. And we obviously as elected officials are, you know, required. Or hopefully we do it is we went through all the budget stuff in detail, line by line, and we did it in public here too as well. But we can't expect all of our residents to do that. And I felt that it's important that we have what I'm calling like a truth in budgeting discussion where we can actually present the budget in a manner that's more digestible, more understandable from the public. And I know that's something that Danielle wanted to put a lot of effort into this coming year because this is her first year doing this. And I'm not saying that there's any confusion about what Danielle did. I'm not saying that there's any issue with how she does her job. Just a lot of residents are just really confused about a lot of different things. And I think it's it's part of our part of our charter as elected officials to make things more transparent, easier to understand and make this process go easier. I can't tell you how many questions I got the budget, friends, neighbors. Hey, I'm hearing this. I'm hearing this. I know town staff got a ton of questions. Other council members did. So I just felt that well, we've got this volunteer board. We've got Danielle who's who's who does a good job with what she's doing. Can we get them together and have them work through this and determine if there's a way to be able to present this to the town that's easier to understand? And I felt it would be important to have the board involved because they are residents. And they aren't in the weeds like Danielle is through the year when they're looking through the finances and the budget. And just having that open discussion about, hey, you know, I think this would be helpful. This would be helpful. How do we present this to the town, you know, in March, April, May? So that's really the genesis of it. I hoping that helps the town move forward with the budget process. I think that would be a lot easier because there, I mean, even we had questions about stuff that we didn't quite understand. We have those questions. I'm sure residents have those questions. So that's the genesis of it. I I'd like to hear from Jeff's here. Danielle's here. They'd like to provide.
You want to put a motion on the floor for discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to direct the finance board, including board appointees, the administrator and finance director to meet and provide a report on how to better create, review and present the annual budget with the report presented to the town council by the October 21st meeting.
Second.
All right. So we got our motion, our second. We will hear from the public too, but does council have any immediate questions before we do?
I would, I I mean, I think I'd like to hear from Danielle.
So that's a.
Yeah.
No, okay.
Well, I'll just give you my before hearing from Danielle, my my gut on this is. You know, this was the first year that Danielle presented the budget. And if I were doing it the first time, I just pick up what was done last time and put it forward. And so she hasn't really had an opportunity to make the process her own. She kind of picked up the same process that we're ahead and using. I don't know that the finance board is the best group to 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 do to do this. I have a problem with directing them to meet and provide a report. I think that and I I fully in agreement with providing clear, concise, accurate information on the budget. But I think I would like to leave it to her to determine how that will be done. And if members of the finance board want to get involved in that, once the next budget is being prepared, I think that's fine. But their role, it's not even their, it's not their budget, quite frankly. I mean, they they provide feedback to the administrator when she's presenting or he is presenting a budget to the council. It's the council's budget ultimately that's presented to the voters. So I I just, I I I don't think that directing the finance board to come up with this report is is the is the best way to accomplish the goal that you're trying to accomplish. That's my.
Anybody else have feedback before we put in? All right.
No, it's simply in line in alignment with Councilor Reynolds. I think I'd like to hear because I do think that that Danielle probably has an opportunity to shape things and maybe take a different approach. So just before we give a direction of of asking our board commission to work on something, I I I'm looking forward to hearing from her that she may already have this in process.
Yeah.
Have this suggestion. So we'll see what happens.
Danielle, I hate to put you on the spot. Would you like to lead off public comment? She's like, oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand, Jeff, while she's getting up there.
Agree. I would love for it not to be easier to read. I really know the word there.
I don't think the public's going to hear you because you talk soft and he's coughing all over you. Like some water? Very good meeting, I think. Anyway, um, sorry from from the beginning, if you don't mind.
I had I struggled getting to figure out what was on on the the budget. I reached out to a lot of people. Anything that can be done to make it easier to read, I would I would appreciate. I I hear the feedback about about it being her first year, and I agree with that too. Yeah, it's, you know, because you, you know, you don't really know what people want, so. But yeah, anything that can be done to make it easier, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
The residents especially.
Yeah, for sure. My first year on council, I definitely got real close with Laura Kenyon, calling her a lot, asking her a lot of questions. And I know that we now have Danielle in her place who has, what is it, 35 years of experience, 32? Almost 32. So she definitely has some ideas she can bring to the table and could probably take the lead in making sure it's the way she wants it in the future years. Because like Mark said, I would pick up what the previous person did and stepping into somebody else's spreadsheet is difficult, even though Laura did an amazing job as well. So I'll kick it over to you now.
I'm not sure if Laura had originally made the spreadsheet. I mean, it was pretty intense. I didn't change it much other than updating all the numbers and changes to any of the descriptions and stuff. But it's not what I've been working on. I've been working on a more condensed version, not as many thing, you know, columns and stuff. So I don't know if you want to just talk to me about what you think.
Sure.
And just to get a different perspective on it from myself, like you know, I know the numbers. So it's not always easy for me to explain it out to people.
Do you want me to stand up there or?
Yeah. Switch because I think the microphone's there, the camera's there. So if you're all set, I'll just play Laura. I'm so sorry. It's getting late. Um, speaking of which, before you do get started, can I have a motion to go past nine?
Go first. Second.
Go for a roll call vote. Counselor Ginsmore. Manic.
Yes.
Hong Shana.
Yes.
Valance.
Yes.
Yes, I have Miss Yes as well. All right. Thank you.
So real quick.
Oh, your name.
Noble. And I'm a resident of first. And I was just on the finance committee as point of the finance board just said. I I just thought, I mean, like, let me back up. I'm I'm in the business of always reviewing past actions, right? What went wrong? What went right? And how like what was the end result? Looking at and this time really paying attention to the budget from your taking it to the public, the public been voting on it. And everything that was said about it is obvious that a great many people don't understand both the process. Like historically, what has happened with the budget increasing through time? And then, you know, how you arrive at your allocations and then they have to make a decision. I mean, you saw some people come up here and even say, I mean, they don't understand the fund balance and how much that is of the budget and what we're doing with money. Is there deficit spending? Is there not? I mean, we've seen the letters, the editor and the speeches and the comments. So if you're asking the public to decide on something, right? You've given them that power, like they need to be as informed as possible. No matter what your stance is on how big it is or small or or your approval of it or disapproval of it. Like, I trust the voter to make some a judgment in their own interest, but they have to be given the right information because they may not quite understand what their interest is or is not. So if we can have a process at which the public understands how the budget's created, all Danielle's work, right? How that comes to someone, I mean, the finance board, they take a look at it, then it's passed to you. And every step of the process along the way to then the final product and presentation to the authority that's going to finally approve it, that would be great. I my wife even just said before coming here, she's like, you know, there's a a lot that the school puts out for their budget, a lot of information like she told me there's no even frequently asked questions about municipal budget. So if I can work with whomever aboard Danielle just personally to make these products so people have them available and they can get out. I think it would just make the process easier. You know, I know it's a lot of information and very involved and and complicated, but I think really we've asked the voters to to now take this to referendum instead of the financial town meeting, which is good. But a lot of people are now making a decision and they need information to do that. And how we deliver that, we being the town, is important and needs a serious look at it. So that's why I thought this was a good idea. Yeah, it needs to happen.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. I was excited. I think I mentioned it when we appointed you to the board that I was excited to see something like that come forward through the board. So I don't really know necessarily if you need our direction to to act on it. I'm happy to give it if you'd like our our blessing. I was one of the notes I had was the frequently asked questions too about the municipal budget. I think that it's helpful as people ask questions, we hear the same questions, you add it to the Google sheet and and there it is. Like the other category, it's a frequently asked question right there. What is the other category? It's right there, but having it in a easily digestible manner would be great for people who try to be informed, but just it's it's a lot to consume. So I don't want to put on the public for not being informed because I do think people do their best, but there's a lot of information out there to digest. I did have another point and it did escape me, but I don't know. We'll get back to it in a minute if I remember. But does any council member, anything they want to say?
I think I think it's a good idea. I think maybe we're working with Danielle as an initial matter to try to talk about a simplified format. And then certainly as part of the finance board's consideration of the budget next year, part of that conversation could be, hey, it would be really helpful if this was broken out or this was explained or, you know, and then kind of work it that way. Once you see the format and see the budget, I just don't see the need to convene a a meeting and provide a report in October when the process hasn't started. That was that was my only, I think the idea is a good idea. I think it's just how we go about doing it. You know, I think this would be a better approach. Work, you know, Danielle's obviously thought about it, working on it. You know, you offer it to help and give some insight, go for it. And then as part of the finance board, looking at it, the budget. And you obviously still as a resident could still comment to to Danielle about what you think would be helpful. But as the budget's rolling out, so to speak, next year, talk about what type of materials could be provided, what type of summaries could be prepared that would explain, you know, different aspects of the budget instead of looking at a 37th page spreadsheet. You know.
Sure. Go ahead, Erin.
So I think Jeff brought up another point that's, I think we also have like a publicity. There's not really a direction. Um, and it's a fine line to walk as a staff member in publishing. It I think it's a fine line. Once you guys adopt a budget promoting it in a way, but I think it's a fine line for staff to publish those materials to not appear. But I think the process is probably the most understood part of it. And when I was looking for imagery for the sign about budget information, other towns have like the cycle. And I think that could easily be created that shows, you know, as of because in January, we set the budget timeline for public hearings. And then that could be easily put out there right off the bat on the finance page and then the links associated to and then the frequently asked questions, a lot of that is going to be relative to the budget.
Right.
Detail.
Right.
Detail and what is coming up. And so through that process, maybe a direction can can be given to add this to the website so that that walk of advertising information is not does not look like staff is promoting one way or the other.
I was going to say the exact same thing, like there's always been this delicate balance about how much you put out there because you get accused of telling people how to vote.
I think I think you can do that in a way that's that's objective and not subjective, where you literally say it. What is what is the other? What does the other line mean? Okay, this is what the other line means. There's no opinion on that. It's just it's a fact.
But I think.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Things get twisted.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but speaking as somebody just looking at from the public, right? Like when a department comes to ask for an increase, people do question like why that occurs and like being having having a way for the town to answer that question succinctly or at least like a delivery of that information to people is important because otherwise you just have people guessing or making stuff up. And you know, that's just not helping anyone. So I I I understand what you're saying as far as to, you know, getting information out there. But a little bit of it, though, is that you all are advocating for your departments and for for the services that they provide to the community. And the citizens need to know, A, what you do, but B, why you're asking for the increase and C, what the result is. And I think a lot of that's missing in in the budget presentation. Or, you know, I mean, you all sat there for five hours and went over everything, which is great, but that's even that was a lot to digest. I mean, I I had to, you know, listen to it in pieces. And I, you know, I care about it. So it's just having a delivery mechanism for the information that you all think is important is is kind of what's missing in this whole thing.
Awesome. So it seems like we agree that this is a necessary thing that we all need to have. Circling back to Mark's point, it's just a matter of how. And I think that I'm I'm in the impression where I I agree with Mark. Well, the course of action I'd like to take is not direct the finance board to do it, but allow Danielle to take the leadership position as the finance director. You know, and presented to the finance board in the in the way that she would like to present it to the public. And then, you know, there's kind of your test group because those are the residents and get the feedback there. That I think that's the direction I would like to go with it. But I'm I'm excited to get the information out next year. The point that I forgot that I wanted to mention was that this is only our our third municipal budget vote because we did previously have to do the financial meeting, as many of you remember. So this is a new process that's evolving. So I think it's a great discussion to have so we can have more going forward. Because, yeah, we didn't have what the Chair of School District had, but how long have they been voting? You know, much longer than us. So I just think that's a good point to mention is that we're learning as we go. Any other council feedback?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
There is.
It seems like what I'm hearing is that we just want to have Danielle and I guess whoever, but primarily the people who are still like Mr. Noble or the rest of the finance board work without explicit directions from the council. So with that said, I will retract my motion.
Okay, sounds good. Any other motion or item on this or can we go on to item item six? All right, we'll go on to item six. Thank you. And thank you for your feedback as well and you as well, everybody. On to our last item of new business, another request from Counselor Manic for a discussion consideration of promoting public comment to prioritize Richmond State Roads and in the transportation improvement plan. Sorry, I should not have read that. Go ahead, Dan.
That's fine. I can let Mark take this away if he wants to discuss some of it, or he can let me do it. You've been kind of quiet all night. Up to you.
No, I can. I can. I can. I can chime in, I guess. So as Dan said, he and I met with DOT just to find out what, if anything, they had on the drawing board with respect to 138 in Wyoming. We recognize that the traffic in that area is heavy. We recognize that the road is narrow. You can't make a right, even a right turn out of a lot of those parking lots without going over the center line. So it's a very congested area. And so we just wanted to find out. And so we just wanted to find out from DOT what, you know, if anything is happening there. And get an idea of what the. Potential was for for, you know, anything, just learning, you know, how wide is the road? Is there any excess right of way that could be used? Um, and so one of the things that came out of that is they're in the RIDOT is in the process of establishing their ten year. Capital Improvement Plan for the next ten years and putting projects on a plan. Um, and they said if you want a study of that stretch of road. To determine what potentially could be done, a great way to do that would be to comment on the uh. Capital Improvement Plan, which is currently out for public comment, so. Dan has posted on his, I know on his social media, I don't think the town has, but there's a way, you know, there's a link to get to the. State Capital Improvement Plan, and he actually gave some language that you can copy and paste in. Basically saying we would, you know, Richmond would like the state to undertake a study of the, basically that Main Street area in Wyoming. To determine what could be done to mitigate, you know, the traffic and the, you know, the the hazards that currently exist. And so that's the genesis of this, is trying to get the public to submit those comments. So at least we get on their list of projects. And, you know, it's obvi- it's a long term, it's a ten year plan that starts in twenty twenty six. So um, you know, nothing would happen quickly, but at least we get on the on the list.
You don't mind me adding on additional context, I I should uh talk to Mr. Parker about some of this too. But just um just to clarify, so Talia came up with the wording. Um, that we're asking people to submit, but you don't have to use this wording, you can use anything else. But from a planning and land use perspective, being on a planning board for five years, working with Sean Lacy and Talia. And having conversations with property owners and developers. Essentially, what we have here in Richmond beyond the local roads is we have this primary thoroughfare in one thirty eight, which is a state road going through Wyoming. And as part of one of the goals that was assigned to myself and Mark to look at how to facilitate development Wyoming. Um, we discussed a a number of actions that we were going to take, and one of them was to get an audience with DOT as Mark stated. Um, but from my experience and my knowledge of the situation in Wyoming. Having that road as narrow and congested as is, and and our IDOT stated to us that they would never design a road that narrow now. Even though they don't really build new roads. It would be a, it is a massive barrier to entry for any additional investment or development. In downtown Richmond in Wyoming. Therefore, we need the state's assistance to look at. Studying the traffic pattern in that area and after that, getting states state investment. We cannot do it on our own as a town. And the property owners in that area, if they were to be interested in developing, would also not be able to fund that on their own. It's unfortunate that we are where we are now in twenty twenty five, but we have the opportunity to start now. Instead of being another ten years behind and get this on the state's um transportation improvement plan. So the more comments that we get, the more attention that our town will gather from the state. And depending on how many comments we have and what we say, it could be earlyed up on their project list. So we've got about fifteen days at this point to put as many comments in as possible. So anyone that's here, anyone that's an adult, kids that have an email address, you can put your names in. That's fair, they don't have to be at voting age. But I think it's imperative now that the town puts in some effort, get some investment down here from the state and stop being left behind. Um, we gotta start somewhere and we're gonna start now, and I think this is the start of it.
Two questions for you. What is the date the survey on? You said fifteen days?
July thirty thirtieth.
Thirty, thank you. Uh, my second question is, this is statewide survey, so they don't necessarily need to be Richmond residents. If somebody lives in Hopkinton or Exeter, I mean, I, when I lived in Exeter, I would drive, still drive through that often, because that was the closest stop and shop to my house. So anybody who is impacted by that road or cares about the development can. Submit comments, because this is a statewide survey, not a Richmond survey. Is that correct? Okay. That's all my questions, I guess.
Well, one of the other things I want to add, you just reminded me. So as part of the planning board's responsibility, when they get a development application is, depending on the size of the application and the ordinances, the land. Land use and the uh subdivision regulations, there is a traffic study that is required. And it's required to be performed by a um a registered and certified traffic consultant. And then we have to hire another consultant to go through that and make sure that it was done appropriately. This is like a peer review. I I can tell you from being on that board and knowing what I know about the way developments go. I'm not gonna put words into Talia's mouth, but I'm sure she'd agree. Any major land development application for that location is gonna require traffic study. And the first thing that's gonna happen through that traffic consultant is gonna say, your roadway is too congested and too narrow to support. X amount of traffic. And that development's done before it even begins. So without getting the state involved, and the state will say, well, if you want to do it, you're gonna have to fund it. But if we get the state funding, you know, they're funding all kinds of other municipalities in in Rhode Island, why can't we get a piece of it? We can help ourselves get something going in Wyoming.
Thank you. Do you have any questions down this end? Nope. Alright, so there's no action item, because this is just more of a PSA, so we'll move on to the next item? Alright, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you for doing that, guys. I mean, like you said, start to start anywhere, so.
Alright, Council Prochnow.
You said there wasn't a posting on the town website about that?
No, but there will be.
There will be.
As long as you guys are all in agreement.
Yes, I was just gonna say, I want to make sure that happens. That's great.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that? We advertise all kinds of other things on a motion.
I'm seeing a shit head shake now.
You you're just, it's just gonna be on the town website? You can direct the town administrator.
I don't think we need to.
Get on that.
Just got it on our notes.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Awesome. So we're on to communications petitions, proclamations, resolutions. Um, anybody have anything they want to pull here?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to pull one E for discussion at our next town council meeting.
Sure. So can we have a motion file or anything else?
Open the file, the remainder.
We got a second, so we'll go for our roll call vote, Council Dinsmore?
Yes.
Manic?
Yes.
Prochnow?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Wilcox? Yes. Um, now we have executive session. We want to make our motion?
Motion to enter executive session pursuant to RI General Laws forty two dash four six dash five eight two. Regarding litigation, universal excav- uh excavating opioid and Jordan Carlson.
Second, um, roll call vote, Council Dinsmore?
Yes.
Manic?
Yes.
Prochnow?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Wilcox? Yes. Oh, yeah, go for it.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, my bad. Um, can we please have a motion to exit executive session?
Motion to exit executive session.
Thank you.
Second.
We got a motion, our second. We'll go for our vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Van Nick.
Yes.
Machano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Can we please have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
So moved.
Sorry.
All right, we got our motion, our second. Councilor Dinsmore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Van Nick?
Yes.
Paul Machano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. There were some votes taken in executive session. I've asked our town clerk to read them for us this evening. Whenever you're ready. That, I'm sorry, I think I was a little tired up there.
Um, so there was two motions disclosed in executive session and the first one was to, Vice President Reynolds, um, seconded by President Wilcox to authorize, councilor to take action on the town's behalf in the opioid litigation to accept the advice of the National Council and take necessary steps, oh, as outlined in the June twenty-seventh notification. And then the first.
It was unanimously approved. You're welcome.
Is to. Okay, apologies. To Vice President Reynolds, seconded by President Wilcox to engage in the mediation regarding universal, escalating and authorize Councilor Manet to attend mediation on the town's behalf. And that was also.
Yes, awesome. Thank you so much for your help with that. That brings us to the end.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, we have our motion, our second, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Van Nick?
Yes.